Welcome, everyone. I now call the April 15th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldurks?
Here.
Councilmember Kurd?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcoff?
Here.
All present.
We've got a full house on both sides of the dais. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to propose that we move the resolution to after public comment, due to some of the length of other agenda items this evening.
So we move the... Which... Oh, we moved the resolution to before public comment? Or after?
After.
Oh, so...
Before city reports.
Mayor, I think the council member is referring to Item 9A, Agenda Bill 25075, Resolution Affirming Bothell as a Welcoming Community.
And so we'll do that immediately following public comment? Okay, I understand.
That's a motion. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldurks to do that, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldurks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcoff?
Yes.
House is 7-0.
Thank you. And I'm making a note right now, so I don't forget to do that, and have everybody yell at me.
By the way... We'd be nice about it.
I'm sure I'll give you another way. All right, next up is Public Engagement Opportunities. We have the Fourth of July Parade we need a grand marshal for. Do you know someone making an impact in the community? Nominate them to be the Fourth of July Parade's grand marshal. Nominations are open now through April 18th, 2025, online. We have the Earth Day Volunteer Event, where you can volunteer to help restore salmon habitat with Whale Scout by removing invasive plants at the former Wayne Golf Course. It's on April 26th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And we have a new transit program. Bothell is experiencing significant growth, particularly in Canyon Park, and the city has launched a new program, Move Bothell, to help residents and employees get around. Companies may be eligible for free ore capaces for use on transit, light rail, and van pool. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. For Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas April 2025 marks the 24th anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which draws attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has implications for every community member, and whereas sexual assault is pervasive, every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States, and in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, with evidence indicating that trans and gender non-binary people are at even greater risk. And whereas sexual violence can impact people of any age, gender, religion, ethnicity, and identity, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQIA+ people, elders, people with disabilities, and others who have been historically oppressed are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas sexual assault is among the most underreported crime for many reasons, but survivors who are already most marginalized face additional barriers to reporting, such as language, immigration status, or disability. And whereas survivors of sexual assault may never forget their victimization, but they can heal with support from family, friends, and their communities. Sexual assault programs across King County and Washington State offer free and confidential support, advocacy, information, and resources to survivors. And whereas by working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Bothell, joining advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing And I believe we have representatives from KCSARC to accept King County Sexual Assault Resource Center.
Hi, my name is Katie Yamamoto. I've lived in Bothell all my life. I went to Maywood Hills, Canyon Park, Bothell High School. I migrated over to Seattle to go to UW, but eventually found my way back, and now I'm a legal advocate at the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. We are a nonprofit organization, and I'm here on their behalf to accept the Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month proclamation. Thank you for being part of the solution to sexual violence. First, a message to our survivors in the community. You are not alone. Sexual violence is common, and chances are that you know someone in your life who has been sexually assaulted before. The trauma of sexual assault is something that can affect a survivor's mental, physical, behavioral health, their ability to form healthy relationships, and their ability to remain in school and the workplace. KCSARC alone has supported 4,300 survivors and their family members in the last year. Almost half of our clients are teens and children. We know that they are one of the most vulnerable populations to be targeted and one of the least likely to speak up about it when it happens and be believed when they do. I want to end with another message. That free and confidential help is available. Our good starting point is our 24-hour resource line at 888-99-VOICE. We always say we can't change what we can't talk about, so thank you for your leadership and willingness to be loud about sexual assault.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. All right, next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, we will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak today?
We do. Mayor Thompson, thank you. Before I run through, call on people in the audience, I do want to say we received 27 written comments received in support of adopting the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people. All of those comments will be made part of the record, but I'm not going to run through all those names, but you did receive those 27 written comments. And now, before I call on members of the audience, I'm going to then also say that public comments shall be limited to the topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments that are not germane to these subject matters may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. Each person will get three minutes. The first person I have signed up is Carol Sullivan. So if you step to the podium, the mic is on, and we'll start the timer. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, and council members, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Carol Sullivan, and I'm a resident of Bothell. I'm here in support of the resolution to make Bothell a welcoming community for LGBTQ+ people. Read my shirt. Everyone is welcome here. The message is clear. The graphics may be racially in tone, but the message says that everyone, and that means not just people who look like me, believe like me, dress like me, worship like me, or live and love like me, are welcome here. No, it means that all are welcome here. It does not exclude others who look different and have different beliefs and celebrate different holy days, dress differently, or love differently. We are all God's creations, and God doesn't make mistakes. However, as we know, others often, or the others, are often misunderstood and are subjected to belittlement, harassment, and harm, especially in the media, and most recently, the last few years, in oppressive laws. I see a misunderstanding often when I'm with my adult autistic grandson. He is definitely different, but it's knowing Max and having personal acquaintance with two trans people that I can say very comfortably that everyone is entitled to respect, to be the person God meant them to be, and not subject to attempts to train or deprogram them out of who God made them and who God intended them to be. People who are different from what we perceive as the norm are often afraid to speak for themselves because they are afraid of harassment or harm, and that's especially true for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people. And that's why it's up to us, as a caring community, to be brave advocates and to speak up for them, people who are vulnerable in our community. Everyone is welcome in Bothell. That's what the resolution implies, and that's why I urge its passing this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Olive Provencio Johnson.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time, for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight to speak in full support of the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people. This isn't just about words on paper. It's about who we are and who we choose to be together. Empathy has somehow become controversial, even treated like a weakness by some. But the truth is, empathy is foundational to who we are as people. From the time we're children, we instinctively reach out to others to comfort a friend, help a neighbor, or offer kindness to a stranger. That instinct should be nurtured, not dismissed, and this very instinct should be reflected in the communities that we live. Everyone deserves to feel safe in the place they call home. This resolution doesn't threaten anyone's safety. It uplifts the safety and dignity for all. It says, "You belong here, no matter your race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or background." I grew up in Texas, where I learned firsthand what it feels like to be conditionally accepted, unfortunately, welcomed only if you fit a narrow mold. It hurt. It was isolating, and it taught me how damaging exclusion can be, especially when it's cloaked in politeness or piety. What's often more painful is the loudest voices opposing inclusivity, in my experience, often come from people who strongly identify as Christian. That confuses me deeply as I was raised Catholic. I was taught that faith is rooted in love, compassion, and humility, not judgment or exclusion. The idea that a resolution affirming kindness could spark outrage in any way from anyone is frankly heartbreaking. Kindness costs us nothing. This resolution makes me proud to call Bothell home. It tells our LGBTQ neighbors, our immigrant families, our BIPOC community members, you matter. You are not just tolerated, you are celebrated. To those who feel threatened by inclusivity, I would gently ask, who are we if not a community that cares for one another? Let us be bold enough to lead with love. Let us build a city where everyone, everyone, feels safe, warm, and welcome. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have James Oral.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is James Oral, and I'm a third-generation Bothell resident, proud Bothell High School Cougar. I'm speaking today in support of the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people. I'd like to talk briefly about the life of my uncle. While he is not transgender, my uncle Mark, a Bothell High School class of 1973 graduate, is gay. He says he knew he was gay at age six, but he struggled well into adulthood with feelings of shame, suicidal thoughts, and depression. When he finally gained the courage to come out to his family at age 32, they were surprised, maybe a little confused, but they took the opportunity to think more deeply about their views on homosexuality and ultimately became strong allies in the process. Now, my uncle Mark is retired, happily married for 15 years to Joe, the love of his life, and in fact, is a very devout Christian who has led Bible groups and worked with homeless LGBTQ youth in his community in L.A. But all those years of shame and pain could have been avoided if he had known that his family and community would still love him and support him regardless of his gender and sexuality. In more recent years, several of my friends have been able to come out as transgender as well. Without exception, this has made them happier, more confident, and more able to engage with their work and their community. I would like to believe that I can invite them to join me at the ranch in Bothell for a burger without fear that someone will make bigoted remarks or cast judgmental looks at them, or worse, that they could be denied service or even targeted with violence for their gender expression. Now, today, as we begin to understand that there is in fact a great deal of complexity to gender, there are people in our lives who are wondering if they could express themselves honestly without fear of being ostracized or targeted. In particular, I think this agonizing internal strife affects many of our teens and young adults while they are already struggling to fit in with their peers. By adopting a stance that we will love you no matter what, that we will work to keep you safe here in Bothell, we create a healthier community where people can be exactly who they are and avoid the pain and shame that so many who have gone before have experienced. With that in mind, I applaud your efforts to affirm that Bothell is a welcoming and loving place for all people, especially those who are most vulnerable in the current political climate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Lowry.
My name is Michael Lowry. I've been a resident of Bothell for the past seven years. I come to speak in favor of the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. Members of the LGBTQ+ community, particularly trans members, are under increasing attack these days all across the country. One of my friends from college, a trans woman, felt the need to move from Virginia to another state to avoid attacks on her rights and continued healthcare. Her trans girlfriend, an employee of the Social Security Administration, has to keep her head down at work lest she be outed and fired under this administration's anti-trans executive orders. There's even a local initiative, the Kawaguchi-O'Connor Initiative, to help relocate young trans adults to the Seattle area from areas where they face increasing hostility and persecution. The fact is that transgender people, especially teens who live in hostile or unwelcome environments, attempt suicide at several times the rate of those who live in communities who welcome them. According to the Trevor Project, anti-transgender laws between 2018 and 2022 increased suicide attempts among transgender youth by 72%. Transgender people have always been in our society and in our community. They are watching what is said here today with fear and hope. When you degrade them, when you attack them as sick or predators, when you dehumanize them, you are causing real harm to your neighbors who live in this community. I myself am a father of a four-year-old girl. I want her to grow up in a community that supports her and her friends, one that is inclusive of their identities and supportive of their healthy choices. Should the day come that my daughter informs me that he is actually my son, I will be there fully supportive. I hope my community will be there too, as a supportive factor. To anyone opposing this resolution tonight, if you have or want kids, I want you to think about this. I want you to imagine your child trusting you, trusting you enough to come out to you as trans. I want you to think about how they would feel when you betray that trust, when you tell them that you reject them for who they are, that you think they are delusional, that you know them better than they know themselves, that they should never be allowed to play sports with their friends ever again. Is that what support looks like to you? Do you think a parent, a community repudiating their identity won't harm them and drive them to self-harm? Can you even imagine being in their shoes? So I welcome this resolution. It is a necessary, though insufficient, step to publicly declare our acceptance of the LGBTQ+ community, but we must all live this commitment in our daily lives. Basic acceptance and respect does not mean you have to fly a pride flag or deny your faith. It just means respecting the dignity of every person as an equal, as our nation's founding document says. All people are created equal, regardless of their race, creed, or gender. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Toddros.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Toddros, and I'd like to speak in favor of councils voting for the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. The vast majority of Bothell supports your efforts to ensure that Bothell is a place for all. I know the phrase silent majority is historically loaded, but despite some loud and persistent voices, it does exist and supports a Bothell for everybody. I'm a Catholic, and in our faith tradition, we are not saved by God's grace alone, but through our works that show God's love and grace for humanity. This resolution is an example of these works, even if it comes from a secular government, ensuring our community is a safe place for all of our neighbors, friends, and families as part of showing the love that Jesus wants us to show each other. I would also like to speak on some of the comments I heard in opposition to the resolution last week. There is much to be said about the natural order and staying true to God's design. The first speaker even referred to LGBTQ+ people as an issue to be solved. It seems that some of them do not consider that LGBTQ+ people are a part of God's design. And even outside of LGBTQ+ people, for example, many babies are born intersex. Are they not a part of God's design? While X and Y chromosomes exist, many people are born with additional or incomplete sex chromosomes, leading to appearances and gender expressions outside the binary. Are they not a part of God's design? I could go on, but simply put, there's a misunderstanding of biology expressed by some last week. Finally, I'd like to return to the nature of works. Whenever the city has expressed support for ensuring an inclusive community, it has been a sad trope to expect that some of the people cite their faith as a reason for opposition to it. They have become known by their works, which is exclusively opposing inclusivity. I would like to offer an alternative. What if your works focus on helping our most vulnerable? What if your works focus on providing for the poor? What if your works support a housing for all? What if your works include speaking for Gaza, where thousands are being murdered every day? What if your works included speaking up against violent deportations that often impact Christian families? When one's works are exclusively about making other children of God feel alienated in their home community, that is not following Christ, that's following your ego. I know that is harsh to hear, and perhaps not kind of mean to say, but as someone said last week, it is not love to see your neighbor's house burnt down and say nothing. I hope that you wake up and put out your own fires. I hope this resolution is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Slade.
Good evening. I'm here today to speak in support of the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. I offer you the following information about myself. I hold two degrees from the University of Washington, including an undergraduate degree in biology that I received right here in Bothell. I have dedicated my entire career to supporting public health. I'm also a Lutheran. Most importantly, I am a friend and loved one to many members of the LGBTQ+ community, and I am the proud daughter of a gay man. I speak as an ally in support of this resolution because the undeniable truth of the matter is this: LGBTQ+ people have always existed and will continue to exist regardless of whether or not we choose to welcome them. They have always been a part of our community, and they will always remain a part of our community. I have heard too many Bothell citizens speak about members of the LGBTQ+ community as if they were nothing but problems to be solved, issues to be fixed, or delusions to be quelled, and frankly, this disgusts me. The dangerous rhetoric deeming LGBTQ+ folks as biologically inappropriate, morally reprehensible, and mentally ill is not only false, it is extremely harmful. In spite of the fact that they still face marginalization and persecution, the LGBTQ+ folks in our community step up as valued members of our society. They are your lawyers who helped you divorce your abusive spouse. They are your paramedics who performed medical intervention to save your life. They are your pastors who helped you through your grief journey after the loss of a loved one. What strengthens us as a community and colors our lives is the inclusion of people from all different groups. When we ostracize those who are different from us, we create an echo chamber of our own views, where growth stagnates and where enrichment, understanding, and compassion go to die. This echo chamber stokes fear, which so quickly turns to hate, and there is no room for hate in this community. We rely on the strength of our community to bring us together in times of hardship and in moments of triumph. We cannot have strength in our community if we do not include everyone. A community without people from all parts of life, sharing their experiences, lifting each other up, and standing together is not a community at all. I feel sorry for people who have so much hate in their hearts that they feel they cannot allow others to live as who they are. As for me, I choose to live my life by prioritizing kindness, giving grace to those who are different from me, and caring for my community that surrounds me. Again, I wish to show my support for the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Ferguson.
Hi, my name's Ann. I've lived in Bothell for about six years now. I'd like to say that transgender rights stem from human rights. Those fundamental rights belong to every person. Persons with either cisgender or transgender identities deserve to live and flourish in their communities with freedom to learn, work, love, play, and build lives connected with others at home, in the workplace, and in public settings. We are at a critical point in time. The civil and human rights of people residing in the United States are being severely violated. It is vital that we make our voices heard and reaffirm Bothell as a welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Oliver Bass.
My name is Oliver. I use they/them pronouns, and I am here to voice my strong support of the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. As a gender queer person, it is hard to articulate just how terrifying the last months have been. As you know, the Trump administration is trying to erase my community in every conceivable way, from public life, from history, from academia, from everything. It is deeply meaningful to me to see that my representatives locally utterly reject the bigotry and hatred being levied by Trump and his administration. And yet, despite the wonderful actions being done to protect my community at the state level and through resolutions like this one, I'm here to say that more can and should be done. While you can't reverse what's already happened, you can be an engaged, vocal, and visible accomplice to the queer community. You have made a lot of commitments in your resolution, and I urge you to invest in them through every means at your disposal, whether they be financial or educational. You are very much needed at this moment because among the many threats to my community, one of them is the active defunding of federal programs and grants associated with us. Anything that includes words like affirming care, gay, gender, gender diversity, gender ideology, gender-affirming care, LGBTQ, non-binary pronouns, sexuality, they/them, trans or transgender, just to name a few, we can only begin to imagine the extent of the damage that these attacks will have, and we need local government to stand up to fill the hole that these federal left by these federal resources. Now, you've already taken a step in the right direction, specifically in Sections 4 and 5 of your resolution. You provide examples of how you want to move towards affirmation through sustained support for things like actively celebrating and uplifting the queer voices through public events, education, and partnerships with local organizations, encouraging and providing education about the importance of pronoun usage in public communications and city spaces, opposing efforts to erase... Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Rose.
Hello. I've never done this before, but I'm here. Hi, everyone. Thanks for hearing me. Thanks for everyone. It's really encouraging hearing that so far. I have a couple of things I want to say, so I'm going to talk quickly. My name is Lisa Rose, and my child attends preschool here in Bothell, and I've also lived here, but I live in Breyer now. So I'm speaking in support of the welcoming resolution, and most of my comments were specifically written in response to some of the oppositions that I heard from the recording of last week's meeting, just as a preface here. So I'm here because viewing that made me feel afraid, afraid that as a country, we're trying to move backward, backward toward a time when everyone was very explicitly not welcome in our communities, when queer people were criminalized and silence was survival, when only a generation ago, people were legally segregated by the color of their skin. We need to learn from that past and not move back toward a time when not all of us had equal rights. Oppositions to this resolution, the ones that I heard, said, "We don't need it. You know, Bothell's already welcoming." But singling out a minority whose very existence is being denied at a national level is critical. The purpose of this resolution is to ensure everyone is welcome. If you take issue with it, I wonder if you also take issue with Bothell proclaiming that women are welcome, that Black people are welcome. Does not exclude other people, to include groups that have been historically marginalized. Community is for everyone, and proclaiming one group is welcome does not mean that others are not. Learning is part of growth, and open discussions like these are really important and help us learn and help us build a better future for our kids. But I will stand up against any attempt to shut down a resolution that simply says everyone is welcome. I have a couple statistics just to add, back that up. I work in research, so here's some statistics for you. In 2024, 10,000 books were banned in U.S. public schools, with 47% of those representing LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC voices. In Seattle last month, there was an incident where a group drove around in a car harassing patrons on Capitol Hill, shooting them with water gun pellets and shouting slurs. This is happening in our communities. And, you know, there was a deadly shooting at a gay bar in Colorado a couple years ago. This is necessary. These words are important. If you don't see the need for this proclamation, I don't think that you're listening. And if you think that God opposes loving and welcoming your neighbor, I ask you to please pause and reflect. My preschooler knows that she is loved and accepted no matter who she is. We surround her with that message in our words, in our actions, in the communities that we spend time in, and we remind her whoever she grows up to be, whoever she loves, she is always loved, and she is always welcome. I want that to be true in Bothell, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Dunham.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow Bothellians. I'm Paul Dunham, and I've lived in Bothell for about 40 years, but I didn't grow up here. I grew up in a small Midwestern town in the middle of the so-called Bible Belt. I have a story to share that might shed my opinion, position on the resolution, same as everyone else, and also an uncle. Just a few months ago, I buried my favorite uncle. He lived to be 97 and died in his own home where he wanted to be. He never married, had no children. A cousin and I met in the deep south town where he lived to help settle his estate. For five days, we sifted through his belongings, looking for any documents needed by his lawyer and any family relics we wanted to keep or send to our other cousins. Although we had known him all our lives and found no surprises, it was bittersweet to view his life as reflected by what he kept in boxes stashed in closets. Following his two elder brothers, he joined the Army after finishing high school. After service, he went to college. We found a box of all his framed diplomas and rewards. He spent his career as a college professor and retired as the head of his department in a state university. He enjoyed several years of retirement, decades of retirement. My cousin and I had known that he was gay. As a child in a small Midwestern town with him nearby, I got to know his friend, Bob, as almost a family member, but I never heard the word homosexual and thought that gay just meant happy. Bob and my uncle didn't live together, so I just saw them as bachelors that were good friends. I had friends, too, after all, and one that I considered my best friend. By the time I was an adult, the pieces fell into place, and it didn't matter to me. I still loved my uncle, and he loved me. That was truly all that mattered. In the decades since, he and I never discussed his sexuality or the trials he faced to keep it private. I figured it was his topic to bring up, and he never did. To my knowledge, he never came out, and he pulled it off as a teacher in the South. Wow. Hitler's Germany incarcerated approximately 100,000 gay men between 1933 and 1945 after assuming their guilt and torturing them for their confessions. 60% died there. Today, in this country, the good old USA, the fate of Abigail Garcia illustrates that any of us could be abducted and flown to a prison in El Salvador for essentially any reason that our dear leader or his licks spittle minions might fabricate with no recourse available. So with all the hysteria and frenzy over trans people, what sports they participate in, where they pee, et cetera, manufactured in right-wing think tanks and delivered to receptive congregations as an existential threat to their survival, this resolution is necessary. As we pledge the flag, liberty and justice for all, no one should have to live their lives in secret. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Sharp.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you tonight. My name is Carolyn Sharp. I'm here as a Bothell resident, but mostly, I'm here as a mom. As a mom, I need to tell you why passing the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community is so important. I'm sure a lot of you have had to take your kids to Seattle Children's Hospital for one thing or another. We certainly have. With two kids, we've been to multiple departments and offside clinics for one thing or another over the years, and you get to know the drill. Accept. Accept that Seattle Children's Hospital houses their gender clinic off-campus. There's no signage. There's a security guard behind a secure door. You have to be buzzed into the waiting room, which they'll only do if you have an appointment that day. It's at once comforting and devastating. If nothing else announces, a child questioning their gender in any way is a target, this absolutely does. And that realization hits like a body blow. The clear message of random strangers want your child dead now is something you can't unknow, ever. Here, in this blue area of a blue state, we have to hide clinics for kids seeking counseling and medical care so that bigots won't kill everyone there. That's why this is so important, because the debate around trans and gender nonconforming really boils down to one side simply wanting to live their lives as the people they are with safety and dignity, and the other wanting to not only deny safety and acceptance, but the very existence of a marginalized people because they don't want those people to exist. My daughter exists. She's kind and smart and funny and ridiculously empathetic. She loves reading and coding and robotics. Her existence, her life, her joy, is not a threat to anyone. I had mixed feelings about her being here tonight because I didn't want to expose my baby to hate and vitriol and bigotry aimed at her. But the thing is, tonight's a community meeting, and she is a part of this community. I need each of you to look me in the eye and tell me, is my daughter welcome here?
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Your time is up.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine. Next, we have Catherine Olsen Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, City Manager Stenert, Bothell City Council, and city staff and residents. My name is Kathy Sharp. My family has lived in Bothell on the slopes of Norway Hill for 42 years. Thank you for the opportunity to make public comment on the proposed resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community and committing to protection for the civil rights, safety, and well-being of all LGBTQIA+ individuals. I believe this resolution is on point and especially needed at this time and place, and I ask that you pass it. My perspective on the resolution come from four sources. My husband and I have raised three children to adulthood here. I care about this community in its entirety. I am now a retired minister in my local Bothell Church, North Creek Community of Christ. We are welcoming and affirming of LGBTQIA+ individuals. We choose to mutually love and support each other, following Jesus's law to love our neighbors as ourselves, and that includes everyone. I serve as chair for the Issues Committee of the First Legislative District Democrats, which includes Bothell and other neighboring cities. Our membership has been so alarmed in 2025 by the recent pervasive attacks by the federal executive branch and attempts to bureaucratically erase LGBTQIA+ individuals that our general membership has passed two resolutions calling for solidarity and aid to these individuals. These cruelties accomplish nothing for American citizens. Instead, they are designed to shame and obliterate transgender existence. Finally, I appeal to you as godmother and grandmother. I have a teen transgender godson in Seattle, two teenage non-binary grandchildren nearby, and one teenage transgender granddaughter. Of course, I want all of them to feel welcome and safe in Bothell. My granddaughter lives in Bothell and attends a North Shore Public High School. She has come out to her schoolmates, who offer positive acceptance. It is important to me that she always knows she is welcome, safe, and protected in the only hometown she has ever known. Passing this resolution will freshly affirm your commitment to all our citizens and visitors. Defeating it may signal an unwillingness to welcome or protect people.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nancy Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. Nancy Callahan is my name. I've been a resident and a homeowner for 19 years here in Bothell. I'm a retired elementary teacher for 35 years and a grandmother of four children. They also live in Bothell. I'm elected PCO of this, your district, LD number one, and one of my many responsibilities as a PCO is to be aware of what is going on in our district, our county, even our state, and to speak up and out about issues and policies that affect our city, our citizens, and our children. I'm here to address the resolution, AB 25075, affirming Bothell as a welcoming committee, community to transgender, non-binary, gender diverse people. I recently watched a live two-and-a-half-hour presentation that addressed this very issue. First and foremost, the research and comments of Dr. Colin Wright, Ph.D., were sex is binary and has been for 600 million years. He says anything other than that is an attack on biology. And he commented about the percentages. 49.19% of babies born are male. 50.79% babies born are female. So do the math. That's not 100%. 0.02 babies, it's not clear. He says that's not a third gender, that's some kind of a, you know, alimony mutation like fingers or toes. So he says there's only two gamuts. There's a sperm, and there's the ovum. Sex cannot be on a spectrum, for that matter. This is relatively new, found gender ideology is rooted on gender dysphoria, a nonbiological, psychological, and emotional condition that needs to be addressed. I quote Dr. Wright, quote, "It is a rank pseudoscience and has no basis in evidence science. It is a social contagium." I am here to urge this council to rethink and veto this resolution. If you know what happened in Linwood with that transgender man who was supposed to be on their council, and he turned out to have very questionable pornographic background, I'm not saying that's across the board, but I'm saying you are welcoming non-vetting people. This is not about love and hate. This is not about Christianity. This is about taking a look at the science and the agenda that has been going on for years to indoctrinate our people.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have. Next, we have Micah Campbell.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and City Council members. Thank you for once again giving us the opportunity to come and speak. Tonight, I would like to speak once more on the resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community. Let me draw a quick illustration. If a person falls and breaks their arm, simply giving painkillers will not take care of the problem and would not truly be helpful. Rather, the broken arm must be set for proper healing. This resolution that is being considered tonight is simply like a painkiller. It only covers the problem and does not truly deal with it. Yes, gender dysphoria can be very difficult to navigate. Sadly, the risk of suicide is much higher for gender dysphoric. It has been said that the reason for this is that these people face rejection and have a high depression rate for that reason. However, it is very alarming that people who have already undergone gender transition still have 95% greater risk of suicide than those who retained their birth sex. The risk of suicide remains even after gender transition. In fact, multiple studies have shown that there is no link of gender confirmation processes to a reduced risk of suicide. So is gender transition really dealing with the pain of dysphoria, or is it more like a painkiller? I ask you, do you want more suicide? Certainly not. But if promotion of gender transition does not truly deal with the dysphoria, we must ask ourselves if this resolution is supportive of practices that will lead to greater health in our community. We all want Bothell to be a place that is welcoming, but if we are supporting permanent and irreversible changes for bodies, is that truly a good thing to support? But the things promoted in this resolution will provide more harm than help to vulnerable people in need. In conclusion, this resolution- The risk of suicide remains even after gender transition. In fact, multiple studies have shown that there is no link of gender confirmation processes to a reduced risk of suicide. So is gender transition really dealing with the pain of dysphoria? Or is it more like a painkiller? I ask you, do you want more suicide? Certainly not. But if promotion of gender transition does not truly deal with the dysphoria, we must ask ourselves if this resolution is supportive of practices that will lead to greater health in our community. We all want Bothell to be a place that is welcoming. But if we are supporting permanent and irreversible changes for bodies, is that truly a good thing to support? But the things promoted in this resolution will provide more harm than help to vulnerable people in need. In conclusion, this resolution does not effectively meet the needs of our community. As such, I encourage you to not vote for this resolution. Thank you very much.
Next, we have, thank you, next, we have Luke Campbell.
Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and Bothell City Councilmembers, thank you again for the opportunity to share in this meeting. Thank you also for speaking out against sexual abuse this evening and encouraging people to be aware of that problem. Regarding the resolution titled "Affirming Bothell as a Welcoming Community", I mentioned last week that there are at least two major views of how to be caring to individuals with gender dysphoria. The council tended to see the approach I favored as faulty. Thus, it seemed appropriate to share some information to help explain this position. A prominent rationale for medical transition is the idea that it keeps those with gender dysphoria from being suicidal. However, regarding evidence that seems to support this, a 2023 study included in the National Library of Medicine states, "The literature to date suffers from a lack of methodological rigor that increases the risk of error." In other words, these studies are not necessarily sound. In fact, a 23-year study published since then by Finnish experts came to the conclusion that gender reassignment practices have, quote, "not been shown to reduce even suicidal ideation," or thoughts, "and suicidal ideation is not equal to actual suicide risk," end quote. Even an attorney arguing for gender transition before the U.S. Supreme Court admitted "there is no evidence in the studies that this treatment reduces completed suicide." Another aspect of the issue is that, according to 11 studies, a solid majority of children with gender dysphoria, as many as 98%, eventually no longer have it without transitioning. This evidence states that, at the least, transitioning is not necessary in the majority of cases. But why not encourage transitioning? Well, there are health problems connected with different forms of it, according to various sources. Puberty blockers may encourage depression, and when they are followed with cross-sex hormones, the result is sterility. The American College of Pediatrics states, "Many medical organizations around the world, including the Australian College of Physicians, the Royal College of General Practitioners in the United Kingdom, and the Swedish National Council for Medical Ethics have characterized these interventions in children as experimental and dangerous," end quote. It is pointed out that the research which seemed to show positive results of transitioning has been short-term, and that long-term studies do not demonstrate benefits. Also, it has been shown that studies indicating low regret rates had flaws, such as a very limited definition of regret. Other studies demonstrate detransition rates as high as 30%. In conclusion, we all agree that love is needed in this issue. I encourage you to consider what approach is most consistent with this need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Thompson, that's the last I have signed up to speak. However, if there's anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak, I ask that you go to the podium and state your name for the record. Go ahead. You can line up a little bit. And those in the virtual audience, if you wish to speak to this or any other item, please use the raise hand function, and we will panel you in. I'm gonna call on the people in the room first, and then we'll call on anybody who is in the virtual audience. Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
Hello. My name is Timofey Krstilov. I'm not a citizen, so you don't have to listen to me. But I would like to express my support for the case. So I ask the City Council to vote for the resolution. And yeah. Sorry for my greatly imperfect English, but this is the, all the voices that I have heard, like during the last three talk, three speakers, they're using the strongman fallacy extensively. And also, I know what happens in a country that does not affirm, like LGBTQ plus people. And these are very scary stories. And this is, it's also scary for me as an immigrant because today they will come for LGBTQ people. Tomorrow, they will say that I am not welcome here. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is James Webster. Thank you so much for having me, Council, Mayor. I am a local. I've lived in the greater Seattle area for my entire life, within 25 miles. I'm currently residing in Redmond, but I've been in Bellevue, Shoreline, Duval. Haven't lived in Bothell yet, but hopefully soon. I'd like to speak in support of the resolution. I know firsthand how important acceptance is, how important it is to be able to transition. And I would like to speak to the very personal how much it means to be who you are. I spent so much of my life, undiagnosed with ADHD, and I hated myself because I didn't have the words or the terminology to understand why I was not able to do the things that I needed to do according to other people. And I just assumed that I was the problem. I've spent so much of my life hating myself viciously and brutally. And it has not been until the last 10 years with my incredible partner, who has shown me such kindness and understanding, that we have been able to help build up each other, that I've been able to explore who I am. And I can say confidently that I am the happiest that I have ever been in my entire life. And I am surrounded by people who are themselves the most confident and happiest they've ever been in their entire lives, people who I do not think would be here otherwise. I believe that there are only two types of people in the LGBTQIA+ community who are in the closet. There are those who will come out of the closet, and there are those who will die in the closet. I think that we need to show support. We need to reaffirm in the face of this federal attack of scapegoating against the two SLGBTQIA+ community. They're messing up. They're doing a real bad job. But they're pointing the finger at the most vulnerable people and saying it is our fault. And I would highly encourage Bothell to be a place where we are welcomed, where we can be a part of society and contribute, and be loved, and love in return. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. State your name for the record.
I'm shorter than he is. I'm Cynthia. Thanks for bringing up this proposal. Okay, for two LGBTQIA+, boy, I'll tell you, that's a lot of letters. Two for Two Spirit. Has been around for thousands of years in all different societies. L, me. That's lesbian. G, G, hmm, a lot of people. B, bisexual, means, eh, whoever you love, that's who you love. T, trans, my girlfriend, who is 77 and transgender. Q, queer, because queer is kind of an all-encompassing word. I for intersex. So many children are still being born as intersex because it happens. It happens a lot. And it's still legal in this country for doctors to fix it with surgery. And this person may grow up and realize what's happened to them and be very, very uncomfortable in their skin. A is for asexual, someone who just doesn't want to do the physical things. Plus means anybody else. My grandmother. Yeah. Every human needs to be able to live safely, to have enough food and shelter from the storm, shelter from the storm. Most of us have that available, most of us in this country. If you want to think about it realistically, get a globe and a good atlas, and it'll tell you how many people live where. And I did that a couple of years ago. Half the people in this world are so poor, they don't have enough food. Half the people in this world. They need to be able to, everybody needs to be able to live in fear, to live without fear of being hurt or killed because of who they are. And let's not forget our history and how our fellow humans were treated for much too long. Our groups of different peoples, different peoples, contribute joy and welcoming in our communities. We all do. Gay, straight, old, young. See, I'm both, I'm two of those. We all need, and my grandchildren love that, by the way. We all need each other to knit the community together.
Thank you, Cynthia. Your time is up. Thank you. Go ahead, please. State your name for the record.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Reverend Kristen Joyner, and I serve at Bothell United Methodist Church. And I'm here with about 15 of our congregation, who apparently don't like public speaking, or, well, they like the back row. It's typical. So Bothell United Methodist Church is a place that reflects the image of our beloved God in faces of people with all kinds of ethnicities, abilities, and gender and sexual identities. This is Holy Week for us. And in the Gospel of John, as Jesus was discussing his death with his disciples, he said, "A new command I give you: love one another. As I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this everyone will know that you are my disciples, if you love one another." Pretty clear. He wanted to make sure that he left us with some of these as his last words because they were important and key to us and how we must live. In the Gospel of Luke, Jesus reminded us that "the good neighbor was the one who showed mercy." In Matthew's Gospel, Jesus said that "all the law hangs on loving God and loving our neighbor." These are the teachings of my faith, and not just Christianity, but in many faiths. At Bothell United Methodist Church, we know that there are places in our community where some people are told that they're not loved. So we call it out specifically each week to make it abundantly clear that people who have been marginalized are safe and welcome. I want to live in a community that knows that the priority is to love our neighbors, especially those who are told they're not loved and made to feel they are not safe because of their identity. It shouldn't need to be said, and it should be indisputable. But please, make it abundantly clear that intolerance and negating people's very identity is not okay. And let our loved ones know that they are welcome and safe here in Bothell. Thank you for your service to all the people of Bothell.
Good evening, Council and neighbors. My name is Josie Parkhurst. I'm a resident here in Bothell. Like so many of us here, this evening, I am here to speak in support of the resolution to affirm Bothell as a welcoming community. Now, I did have a few things prepared to say, but I have to say I could not be prouder of my community right now and the way that you guys have showed up. And we need to keep showing up for our trans and LGBTQ neighbors. I just have a couple of comments to add to the conversation. So I would just say, I would like to invite my neighbors to listen very carefully to the rhetoric that is being directed at our trans and non-binary friends. They have been infantilized. They've been vilified as predators. They've been pathologized as sick and confused, even called dishonest and untrustworthy. We hear coded and not-so-coded language directed at a population who face increased risk of violence motivated by hate. Trans youth, as it's been said already, are at especially high risk of anxiety, stress, depression, and self-harm. This is not due to the condition of being transgender. It is due to the rigid structures of gender that our culture imposes on them. It is due to the very real threats and the very real threats to their safety and personhood. This population does not need so-called compassion and guidance. They need protection and advocacy. The attacks on gender non-conforming individuals should concern all of us. This resolution recognizes the need to ensure the social well-being of all individuals. It includes mental health support and recognizes the needs of the youth. It provides education and awareness. Section 2 especially provides concrete steps to protect our LGBTQIA+ neighbors. I want to commend the council on their work on this resolution, and I strongly encourage you to vote on it. Yes. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Mansky. I'm a resident of Bothell. I've not been here very long. I moved here a few months ago. I'm expecting my first child. I'm a non-binary queer person. I specifically chose Bothell as the place to start my family. And so I really hope that you all choose to support this resolution. We need you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt. I am a resident of Bothell for a number of years off and on. And I am here to show support to affirm the resolution. Bothell being a welcoming city is something that's really important to me. I chose to move here to this area because of how welcoming it seems and how welcoming it's been since I've been here. And I want that to continue because I am expecting my first child. And I want that, this community to be a place where that child can be accepted, no matter who they decide to be and who they are born as and everything. I just want it to be a great place for them. I did not prepare anything to talk about here, and I'm realizing I should have written something down. But I just, I love hearing all of the things that other people have said in wanting to affirm the resolution as well. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Angelica. And I didn't really prepare anything either, but I felt really called to speak. I work with, I work with the queer and BIPOC community in East King County, and I am also a queer person myself. And I really want to say that I am in full support of passing this and voting yes on this because we are tired. We've been fighting in our community for a long time, and we really need the support. And I do want to comment on that. I think that a sense of belonging really improves people's depression rates or these suicide rates that have been mentioned. And if we're really concerned about the mental health and well-being of our people and our community, then you will lean more towards passing this and moving into a community of love rather than saying that queerness equates to depression. What equates with depression is a lack of love and acceptance. And that is exactly what we're here asking for. We're asking for you to show in your action that there's love there. Show in your action that there's support, not just with your words. We are tired, and of course, there's depression out there because we are fighting every single day to be accepted. We are fighting every single day for you guys to just validate that we exist. Queerness exists within all of us, and I challenge all of you to deconstruct your ideas around gender, sexuality, and everything because we are everything. It is, it is an illusion that we separate ourselves from each other and that we need to see ourselves in each other so that we can support each other further because we are tired and we do need the support. So I am just challenging you guys to think outside of the box of the binary. Stop thinking so much about gender and think about masculinity and femininity working together, working as a collaboration instead of working against each other. We've been placed in such gender roles that separate ourselves to where we have to choose a gender and choose who we want to be. But really, we are more fluid than we are stagnant, and we need to accept that. And by passing this, you will be validating that you see us and that you support us. And when things happen, we can rely on you and that we can come to you because you have actually taken action towards showing us that there is real support. Depression and all of these things, all of these fear things, they come from a lack of love. And if so, if you want to really show us some love, please, I encourage you to pass this. And I also encourage you to, people, to step away from the idea that depression and suicidal ideation comes from being queer because it comes from a lack of love. And that is all I have to say. And that is all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Mary. I've never been to a city council meeting before. Recently moved to Bothell. I love it here. I scribbled a couple of sentences down. Now they seem so small compared to these previous speakers. So I, you all made me proud of living here. So I just want to say, there's not that much difference between us. If you come right down to it, they say there's six degrees of separation to anybody that you meet. Well, I believe it's a lot less than that. There's not many of us here that can say, even in your family, who you love, that there's somebody that's different. But you love them. And this is a great opportunity for the community to be a part of something so big, including whoever it is that arrives in this city and feels that they're going to be welcome. And I, I thank you for bringing this resolution, and, and I'm really proud that I'm a part of this community. So thank you for bringing it, and thank all of you for really speaking up so eloquently.
My name is Kai, Kai Chavon Sharp, pronouncing she/her, I'm the trans daughter and granddaughter mentioned by the other Sharps that were up here. I'm going to try not to ramble past time like other, my other family members, but I wanted to... But I do want to add some data and perspective of someone who's actually going through the process. Something that was mentioned a lot is like changing sex and like that. I want to mention that there are a lot of safeguards in place that happen. Like, it is extremely hard. You need like two different doctors and a therapist for a gender reassignment surgery under 18. To also, for, for hormones, for at least in Seattle Children's, but in my experience, you need, you need both parents and a doctor's approval. So this is not something that's going willy-nilly. I want to make sure that is clear. Also, on a different thing, I want to add that something I want to see addressed within this proposal is that something that President Trump has mentioned is defunding education in people who don't agree with his beliefs. This also coincides with the fact that we have a district shortfall at this time. I wanted, I want there to be plans in place for if this happens and how this is addressed.
Hello, my name is Emily Pearson, and I actually have a background in wildlife ecology and conservation science, and I'm also a local early learning educator here in the community. And if there's one thing I've learned in those two backgrounds, it is that diversity only ever makes something stronger. So when we're looking at ecological systems, diversity is key. The things that ruin them are things that diverse diverse, or decrease diversity. And when we have systems that have historically decreased that diversity, we have to put effort in to making sure that we add it back in, that we nurture it, that we create space for it. And it's measures like these that allow that to happen, that strengthen our community more than anything. And I've pretty much dedicated my entire education and hopefully my future career into doing that, not only on an ecological level, but on a community level. And kind of tail-ending that, as an educator, as I said, I work with early learning, so like two and a half to three-year-olds is my room. And I often think about, who are they going to be? Are they going to be a president? Are they going to be a doctor? I don't know. They're literally clay. They could be anybody. But if there's one thing I really, really, really value is, no matter who they end up being, that they feel welcome in the community that they live in. That is all that I can really ask for, regardless of who they are. So I want to speak on, you know, in favor of anything that adds that diversity and adds that ability for the kids that I spend every day loving and making sure they can grow up to be a person that is accepted in their community.
Hi, my name is Anisha Chowdhury. I'm a Kenmore resident. I have friends, family who live here. I went to Inglemore High School. And I really just wanted to say, thank you so much for being so brave to speak out and like using your platform for such amazing voices of good and kindness. And I wanted to commend the City of Bothell for taking the step forward and acknowledging that the world is so scary. Our country at the federal level is so scary. As somebody who works at a federal level in politics in this country, I'm so happy that Bothell is somewhere that I can go and feel safe, and I can bring my friends, and they can feel safe. And I just really wanted to reiterate, every single person deserves love, safety, and stability. And that's what this resolution is about. And I hope that the people who spoke against it do some, as somebody so eloquently put, inward reflection, and just talk about, doesn't really matter what somebody else does, or says, or how they choose to live their life. It's about how much you get to live your life, you get to live your life, how loved you are. And I hope that that shines through, and I know that the City of Bothell has done so much good, that I'm hoping can come to Kenmore. And I just wanted to commend you guys for this, and I know that you guys will do the right thing and stand for humanity and kindness. So thank you so much.
That's all I show in the audience here. Does anybody in the virtual audience wish to speak? If so, please use the raise hand function. I'm not seeing anybody.
Thank you. All right. I wrote a note, so I didn't forget. Although this is one thing that I probably wouldn't have forgotten, even if I didn't write a note, and that is saying something. We are going to go to ordinances and resolutions and move to our agenda bills and discuss a resolution affirming Bothell as a welcoming community for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just a brief introduction. As Council will recall, there was a resolution requested before you last week, and now is a final version for consideration, is in your packet. There's no formal presentation tonight, but there are some, some remarks and context and staff's on hand to answer any questions. With that, I'm going to turn things over to our Assistant City Manager, Becky Range, who is joined by our DEI Coordinator, Gabby Kuna. Becky? Straight to Gabby.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, and community. Thank you for the introduction. As we said, my name is Gabby, and I'm the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator. We do have the draft in front of you. There were minor edits that were made after last week's discussion, which were made just for clarity. And as we mentioned last week, this was brought forth by Councilmember Aldrich, based on a community request, after which feedback was gathered from some of our LGBTQIA+ community partner organizations, before bringing it back to Council. Do you have any questions before we begin discussing it further?
It doesn't look like it.
All right. With that, we'll turn it back to Council to...
All right, Council. I mean, I'm assuming that people will have a couple of things to say. Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who gave comment tonight, who came out to just listen to the meeting. That's democracy in action, and I applaud you for doing it. I tried to reply to folks who sent in written comment as much as I could before the meeting as well. If I didn't get you, you're on my list. It's flagged in my inbox. But I just, I just want to thank you for that, whether you support the resolution or not. And I appreciate the time everybody put into their comments. I will be supporting the resolution. It would be, well, it would be insane of me not to, because my family includes queer people, LGBTQIA people, trans people, gender diverse people, and my family is in Bothell. And so many families here, as we've heard tonight, as we didn't have to hear tonight, because we just know from statistics, these people are in our community, they are welcome in our community. And resolutions like this, which I thank Councilmember Aldrich for bringing forward, and our staff for working on with our community-based organizations, help people feel welcome here. And that is all I want. As a mom, I very much identify with the moms who spoke and talked about their kids. I'd love to give you all big hugs. I joined Free Mom Hugs this year, just because I didn't know what to do, so I'm practicing. But I just, I can't imagine feeling like you're not welcome in your hometown. And I will share a story there that, I grew up in Bothell. I'm 37. I've lived here since I was five. I went to Frank Love Canyon Park, Bothell High School, and my very best friend that I met at Bothell High School is a trans, non-binary person. I call them my brother now, and we are very happily choosing to be related. My dad is, is, you know, one of their parent figures, and they were not out in high school. It was not a welcoming environment to be out here. They, the voices like yours were not as open in our community as they are today, and it is so very important that you are all here, serving that welcome to everyone in Bothell, wherever they come from, however they love, however they look. So thank you for that, and I'm very happily voting yes.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks, Mayor. As an openly gay man, Bothell's the first place that I've felt, okay, sharing my identity with my community. And so, thank you for showing up tonight. Thank you for the messages of support. And thank you for caring about our community, regardless of your opinion, for sharing it with us. Like many people, I've been watching with horror and seeing echoes of history on my newsfeed every morning when I wake up. And dehumanizing rhetoric against groups gets publicly platformed in communities just like ours, and it can be weaponized through disinformation, apathy, hatred, and fear by administrations. Genocide and mass atrocities are commonly preceded and accompanied by hate speech, and it's a warning sign of group-targeted violence. If you're not worried, if you don't see the parallels to early Holocaust-era discrimination and ideological oppression, you're either not paying attention, or you haven't been taught the history. We've walked this path before on the East Side with Japanese-American internment 80 years ago. Hate crimes in Washington are at an all-time high now. Never again is now, and if you ever wondered what you would have done during the Holocaust or internment, you're doing it right now. Any cost associated with creating a welcoming, respectful, and inclusive city is worth it. When our grandchildren ask how we met the moment, I'd like to have the receipts. I firmly choose to side with love, justice, and compassion, and I'll be voting in favor of this resolution tonight, to stand with our trans siblings, parents, children, coworkers, neighbors, and friends, to send a message that you are welcome here. Despite intolerance, and especially when your identity is used to distract, manipulate, or deceive, our city's prosperity, humanity, and collective conscience is codependent on you, on your safety, and your belonging here. You're not just welcome here, we need you here.
Councilmember Aldrich.
With that, I would very much like to motion to approve the adoption of this resolution for a welcoming community for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse people, that as we do so, we commit to proactive protections for the civil rights, safety, and well-being of all LGBTQIA+ individuals in the City of Bothell. Thank you for everyone being here tonight. Thank you for your comments. Thank you to our community partners for bringing this forward, and for speaking on behalf of and in support of me, my colleagues, my family, my friends, my loved ones, and other members of the community that I have not met. But we share some similarities, and I am very, very grateful for those of you who came out to speak tonight. Thank you for showing up, for not just speaking up, but for proving that our community is a welcoming place. And it may not be all of us, but there are fewer now than there were when we were teenagers for a generation ago. And as we learn, as we become more informed as a society, we find that there is more inclusion, there is more welcoming, there is more acceptance. And what we're working for here in Bothell is celebration of our differences, of what make us unique, of what is our freedom to express ourselves and to be who we are. So, thank you very much for those who spoke here tonight. And with that, I hope that there will be a second from the dice. Thank you.
Second, all of it, but especially the motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrich, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
I guess I get to go first speaking to my motion.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thanks. I can see and appreciate that there are hearts here who are looking for peace and And though seemingly heartfelt and good intentions, this resolution has me confused over some of the parameters. I want to give you a side story. I remember a big, I don't know who had, a dad influenced their lives. My dad influenced, just poured himself into my heart, and part of my heart beating is my dad's heart beating. He detested labels, hated labels. And I remember as a young adult, probably a teenager, debating him, saying, "But Dad, you can be something. You can be a doctor, you can be a politician." And he just, you know, just fill in that blank. His contention was that all my examples were transitory, that the only thing I could ever be, and there was just one thing that I could ever be, was a child of God. And he said, "Don't confuse activity with your identity." I need to address, because I heard his name brought up many times here, I need to address bringing Christ's name into this. Let's be really clear about what he says, that we have to be very careful about having a clean heart when we want to judge another manservant. Let's also be very careful about using his name as justification. Matthew 7, this, you know, "This is for the people who name Christ," says that there will people who, will be people who will say to him, "Look at all the good things that I did in your name." And he will say, "Leave me, I never knew you. You were practicing lawlessness." And if you have a Bible that you go through, I suggest maybe look at Romans, or John, or Revelation. Those are all good spots to get a picture of his mission. We also got an email that wasn't fully informed about Christ's death, that said it was taken from him. And he said, "No one takes my life. I have the authority to give it and take it back." And Psalm 22 is fantastic for hearing his heart. "To this resolution and being made in the image of God, the added protections and privileges to one particular group troubles me. For when there is one, for, there is one for all of Bothell, and it is creating, this one is creating, as I read it, exclusivity, not inclusivity. And we all want to be included, that's the aim. While we want to love and respect the space for everyone, this has a couple provisions that I see that make women and children more vulnerable. We can love everyone without having to agree 100%. I can't tell you anyone who agrees with me 100% or vice versa." I'm aware of seven or eight, I did a head count of, quite vocal and very public members of the gay community, which caused me to do a search on GLB groups who might be opposed to this. And there's a lot. I counted over a dozen that immediately popped up. They call this, when it's carried to an extreme, as a religious cult, a biotechnological warfare and drag. And it gets more passionate, and they are very pointed about the grooming and the failing to represent their interests and concerns of gay people. There is an element in some who love to break, who love to break innocence, and then they call it ignorance that they're judging. And I love a level of innocence in our world. Please don't confuse loving your neighbor with ignoring holiness, because we do love our neighbors. I'm not condemning, but I got to tell you, it feels like we're in Germany 1935 2.0. This is heavy-handed, and if you can't see it, I really don't know what to say. This resolution is only about conformity, not unity. This divides and not brings together. Call it anything you want, but it's only cloaking divisiveness. Anything said to justify or condemn a viewpoint that doesn't march in step with this is, at best, quite ugly. Our current roadmap of welcoming all can stand, there's no justifiable reason to add this resolution. Take care in the assumptions into valuing personhood, for sure. I protect personhood. I might not dress the way you do, but I will protect your personhood. We should strive for unity, not conformity, and we should not settle for less. For a couple of years now, one woman's bitter words keep ringing in my ears, where she said, when she was going through teenage years, "No one told me that I was enough." And the growing cry coast-to-coast is, enough is enough. We should be trying this again, this resolution again. But I want everyone to remember that if this passes, you will find that it is not enough for the peace and joy that you're seeking. And that's just the struggle that we have in life.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what Councilmember Dodd said earlier at the outset. I want to thank the entire community for turning out and sharing your voices, sharing your opinions. It takes strength and courage and guts, regardless of what your opinion is, to come out, to stand in front of that microphone, and to say what you have to say. Being an American, that's one of the freedoms that makes us, I think, unique. And I just want to acknowledge everybody who came out and say that. And for those that didn't speak out, we recognize you're also here, and you also have strong opinions, and that's okay too. You don't have to get up to the microphone to share your opinions. During last week's projected agenda discussion, I'd asked some questions about this resolution, and expressed some concerns about the fact that council, just a few weeks earlier, had already passed a resolution. That resolution covered all residents of Bothell, and did specifically name the LGBT community. I also expressed some concerns that adding additional resolutions, or an additional resolution for one group named in that resolution, but being unlikely to entertain additional resolutions for all of the other named groups within that resolution was a bit concerning to me. We have one resolution that we passed, and it was community uniting. It was unanimous on council when it was passed, as was the one prior in 2020, and the ones prior to that. Someone once said, "Our diversity is not our strength, our strength is what unites us in our diversity." I don't know if that's true or not. I think there is strength in diversity. I think you have diverse opinions, it brings strength to everybody involved in conversation, in community, and all other aspects. I also know that we're all born, we all make our way through this world the best that we can, the best that we know how, the best we're able, and we all pass on from it. We're all Americans, and we're all residents of Bothell. And as Americans, and as residents of Bothell, we all have individual liberty to live our life that allows us to pursue happiness, whatever that may look like, whether or not anybody else agrees or disagrees with it, as long as it does not interfere with the rights of others. Bothell is, and always will be, welcoming for all people, and I believe that the previous resolution did say it best. The city of Bothell remains committed to being a community in which every person experiences a sense of safety and belongingness, no matter who you are or where you've come from. We care for each other, we respect each other, and we work together to ensure that everyone feels safe and welcome. I am committed to that, and I believe that that is the best way that we have put it, and the best way that we can put it. And I will be supporting the prior resolution that we've already passed, welcoming everybody in the city. At this point in time, I'm not supportive of creating one-off resolutions, because it is not equitable to everybody within the community that would like a resolution of a similar nature. And I don't believe that we should put one group of individuals above another in our community.
The words we've heard from our community tonight have been incredibly moving. We're not supposed to respond to public comment, like I had to sit on my hands, because I just wanted to raise them up in the air, because there were beautiful, loving words said, and I'm equally impressed with the values, and also the rhetorical skill that we have in our community. Like, some of y'all spit fire. Like, it's impressive. But tonight, I am so proud to be a part of this community with you. I have a couple things to say.
Three pages.
Not three paragraphs-ish. Affirming the entire dignity and humanity of one group of residents in no way takes dignity and humanity away from anyone else in our community. Including some excludes nobody. Dignity and humanity are not a zero-sum game. Trans and gender non-conforming people are not a problem to be solved. They are not an argument to win. They are our neighbors. Our job is to love our neighbors, and you can't love someone while you dismiss the validity of their very existence. I appreciated the number of people today who mentioned their faith. And as Christians, the sum of the law and the prophets are the two greatest commandments, are to love God and to love your neighbor. For the non-Christians in the room, if you do those things, you hit all the notes, that covers everything. And if we think about what God needs from us, nothing kind of a thing with being God. So, we show how much we love the God who needs nothing from us by how much we love our neighbor. You can't separate loving God from loving your neighbor in the Christian faith. And it is the opposite of love to refuse to affirm the entire humanity of your neighbor. This isn't a commitment to spending money, as our staff said tonight in the agenda bill, there's no fiscal impact associated with this item. But if spending money to make people feel completely welcome and a full part of our community, if it makes people feel completely welcome and a full part of our community here in Bothell, I can't think of a single better thing to spend money on. Everything we do here at the city is or should be in service of people, and people matter more than anything else that we do. I'd also like to say that trans and gender non-conforming people, they're not the reason we need this resolution. The reason we need this resolution is because we have people in our community who don't accept them, and who don't affirm their entire dignity and humanity. No matter who you are or where you're from, Bothell is everybody's hometown. And please know that no matter who you are or where you come from, we will affirm your dignity and your entire humanity. And if somebody comes for the trans homies, they got to come through us.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't spoken during this part.
Oh.
After the motion was made.
Fair enough. Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. I want to add a quick anecdote. I appreciated Councilmember Zorn's note about their father shaping their life. My father is also important to me. He actually lives with me now, he has a physical disability. And my father has two biological children, plus my bonus sibling that I mentioned. But raising me and my younger brother, my father had a bright, extroverted ADHD daughter, me, and my brother, who is introverted and is on the autism spectrum. And one of the coping mechanisms that my parents became aware of and supports for my brother is just giving him Coca-Cola, something with caffeine, and it helped calm my brother down. So, he got to go to Sorenson and Woodmore as a child and take soda to school. And I was outraged. I was like, "This is not fair, this is not equal, this is not how parenting should be. If he gets soda, I get soda." And my dad, who just, you know, would go up right against the firestorm of a young, sort of injustice-feeling me, talked to me about equality versus equity. And he didn't say those words, because I was like, five. But he did talk to me about how it's not that everybody gets a soda, and he's just not letting me have it. My brother needed a soda to go to school, so that he could calm down and learn. And I did not need that soda to learn. And I look at this resolution in a very simplistic manner, to be clear, as the equivalent of my brother needed a soda and I didn't. It doesn't mean that I don't deserve one, it doesn't mean that I didn't go in as a treat sometimes, but I didn't need one to learn, so I didn't take one to school. And that is a pretty basic principle, equality versus equity. And I just hope that we can all kind of think on that, as we talk about why we're doing this resolution. And I want to highlight that this was brought to Councilmember Aldrich by a community member. You can come to any of us with a resolution. If you see a problem in our community, if you see a group of people, or everyone, that needs support on a topic, we're here for you, because it's literally our job to do that. So, if there's another topic that's close to your heart that you feel is being ignored, please reach out, we are here. Thank you.
I'd also like to just add a note to what our mayor has said about the ways that we celebrate our community. This summer, if you're new here, and you're not paying attention to our agenda bills, I understand. But if you noticed, not too long ago, we passed, we adopted a plan for events in downtown with a local vendor. And one of those nights is going to be a Pride Night. And so, if you're looking for an opportunity to celebrate our queer and trans community, and everybody who falls into the Rainbow Mafia, as it is called, please, come join us in downtown and celebrate Pride Night with us this summer. Thank you.
With that said, City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zorn.
No.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt.
Yes.
Councilmember Manki.
No.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Yes.
Passes 5 to 2, with Councilmembers Manki and Zorn dissenting.
All right, with that, we are going to take a break. It is 7:44, we will be back at 8:05. All right, it's 8:05, roughly. We are going to go back, and it's time for reports. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I also made notes on my scripts, so we're in good shape. Good evening. We do have two items under City Manager Report tonight. Our main event, we will have an outside presentation on the state of the schools from Superintendent Tolly, and we're appreciative of his attendance here tonight. But first, we wanted to go a little out of order, we're going to have a Surface Water Education Program update from Kristy Cox, who is our Surface Water Program Coordinator. And real quick, too, I mentioned to Kristy, but I'll just do the shout-out to, that in our recent study session on parking, there was a shout-out to what to do if you see a vehicle leaking oil on the street. So, I relish those moments of where the intersection of all of the programs that go on at the city can collide, and it's a good reminder of, we have a lot of work to do. So, with that, we're going to hear about some of the efforts that are taking place in the city, from Kristy. Take it away.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Stanner. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. As the City Manager said, I'm Kristy Cox, I'm one of the Surface Water Program Coordinators in Public Works, and I am here tonight to provide you with a brief overview of the Surface Water Education Programs that the city of Bothell offers. This is a staff briefing, so no council action is recommended this evening. I will begin by explaining what stormwater runoff is, or I'm sorry, what stormwater runoff is, and why it can be problematic. Then I'll describe the main elements of our Surface Water Education Programs. I'll wrap up by talking about our regional participation and upcoming events, and at that point, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, let's talk about stormwater runoff, and why we have these Surface Water Education Programs. Stormwater runoff is the rain that falls onto streets, parking lots, driveways, rooftops, other hard surfaces, and flows into storm drains instead of soaking back into the ground. This is important, because when stormwater runoff picks up pollution along its path to a storm drain, that pollution eventually gets carried through the storm drainage system, which empties out into the nearest body of water without any treatment. This is why our education programs focus on ways to prevent polluted runoff, so that we can help protect water quality. The first program that I'll talk about is our Pet Waste Program, which includes four main elements meant to encourage dog owners to pick up after their dogs. First, we offer signs for public spaces, as well as for businesses and residential properties, to remind people to pick up pet waste. We also offer a pet waste pledge to fill out online or on paper, which is a commitment to pick up after your dog on every walk. And as part of that pledge, we provide a leash attachment that's designed to hold a full bag of pet waste away from your hand until you can get to a trash can to dispose of it. Bothell's high-use parks are equipped with pet waste stations, and Public Works is very grateful to the park staff who maintain and refill all of those stations. And since pet waste isn't necessarily the most appealing subject to talk about, sometimes we try to make the topic a little more entertaining and engaging by turning it into a game. In the photo on the bottom right, you're looking at children playing a game at Sustain a Mania, where they learn how to properly dispose of pet waste. And I should probably specify that that is fake pet waste. The goal of the game is for people to understand why pet waste belongs in the trash, not in a compost pile, not in an organic bin, and not left on the ground. As part of that message, we also provide We Scoop stickers for residents to put on their trash cans, as a reminder to neighbors, that pet waste belongs in the trash. Moving along, here are several behaviors that we encourage to prevent vehicle-related pollution. First, we encourage using a commercial car wash when possible, because it directs soap, chemicals, and dirty wash water to the sanitary sewer system, which is treated, rather than to the storm drainage system, which is not. We do understand that commercial car washes aren't always an option for a variety of reasons. So, if you are going to wash your car at home, the goal is to keep those suds and dirty water from running into the street, where they could easily end up in a storm drain. You can accomplish this by washing your vehicle over grass, or if you don't have grass, you can create a berm with something as simple as some rolled-up towels to redirect that water to a landscaped area where it can soak into the ground. Next, we promote checking for and fixing vehicle leaks through the Don't Drip and Drive Program. This is a regional program that teaches drivers how to check for leaks, identify potential sources, and connect with local mechanics if repairs are needed. And lastly, we are also part of Don't Wait to Inflate, which is a regional program focused on keeping vehicle tires properly inflated, and developing a habit of checking air pressure monthly. From a stormwater standpoint, this is beneficial, because properly inflated tires create less tire particle pollution over time, so it keeps water cleaner and fish healthier. The Don't Wait to Inflate website has video tutorials that show how to check your tire pressure, and how to add air, and it also has a map of air-filling stations throughout the state. The next program is Natural Yard Care, which was the city's behavior change program for quite a few years. The program provided online classes and hands-on workshops about a variety of yard care topics. We found- We found that the highest level of participation and behavior change over time happened with participants that had owned a home in Bothell for less than three years. Our website features YouTube recordings and related resources for the classes that we held from 2020 through 2023. In addition, we also have a number of regional natural yard care, a number of regional natural yard care resources, both online and in print and in a variety of languages. Although we're not using this as a behavior change program at this time, we are working with Snohomish Conservation District so that we can still offer several natural yard care classes this year. The majority of Bothell homes are connected to the sewer system, but we do still have about 2,000 homes on septic systems. Last year, we began sharing Snohomish County Health Department's online septic care workshop for homeowners who have a septic system. This self-paced class covers topics such as how a septic system works, how to maintain your system, how to identify warning signs to prevent costly repairs, and how to extend the life of your system. To help ease the financial cost associated with septic system maintenance, King and Snohomish Counties both offer rebates to qualifying residents who complete recommended maintenance to keep their systems functioning as designed. Next, we publicize our spill hotline as a 24-hour phone number to call to let us know if a spill has reached a storm drain or a body of water or if it has the potential to do so. Our spill reporting program aims to teach staff, residents, and businesses how to identify a spill and how to notify us right away so that our staff can respond quickly. Our website includes a list of spill examples, and this year, we improved the site by adding pictures of the examples for easier identification. Our source control program provides outreach and education to businesses to help them establish best management practices for preventing spills. The program also offers a free spill kit and training about how to use it if a spill does happen at the workplace. Our next program focuses on rainwater harvesting, which is allowed and encouraged here in Washington. That's not the case in every state. The top photo shows a residential rain garden in Bothell. Its function is to collect and hold the runoff from your roof and gutters so that it remains on your property. Successful rain gardens work best with a mix of native plants that can tolerate standing water during the rainy season and dry conditions during the summer. In the bottom photo, you are seeing a group of participants learning to assemble their own rain barrels at a do-it-yourself workshop that we held with Snohomish Conservation District last fall. These low-cost rain barrels can be installed in just a few steps so that they can start collecting and storing rainwater to be used during the drier months. They say that good habits start young, which is why learning about stormwater pollution prevention at a young age is so effective. We sponsor an organization called Nature Vision to provide stormwater programs at no cost for pre-K through grade 12 schools in Bothell. The photo on the top is called an EnviroScape model, and it's used in the classroom to demonstrate how a little pollution here and there can turn into quite a mess when you sprinkle it with water or rain. In partnership with our conservation districts, we have also implemented some green schoolyards projects with several Bothell schools. The photo on the bottom shows students at Frank Love Elementary adding mulch around one of eight conifer trees that were planted on campus last November to help manage stormwater. Snohomish Conservation District estimates that these eight trees will help intercept, transpire, and absorb about 30,000 gallons of rainwater each year. We promote environmental stewardship by partnering with local nonprofit organizations that are focused on habitat preservation and restoration. This photo on the top is from last year's Earth Day event in partnership with Whale Scout, and it shows a group of very dedicated volunteers removing invasive blackberry near the Sumamish River at Blythe Park. We also encourage stewardship through the Regional Adopt a Drain Program. Residents can adopt their neighborhood's storm drain and commit to keeping the area around it clean and clear so that pollution stays out and excess rain has somewhere to go. The city participates in a number of annual campaigns, both regionally and nationally. Right now, we are in the middle of Earth Month, which you'll hear more about on the next slide. Later this month, we are participating in the annual Survive the Sound Steelhead Migration Race, and voting is open to the community until April 21st to determine who will be Team Bothell's spokesfish this year. In June, we'll be celebrating the wonderful world of pollinators during Pollinator Week, and this year's national theme is Pollinator Cultural Connections. In fall, we'll join surrounding cities to start looking for Chinook, Saukai, and Koho during King County's salmon season. September will be a busy one as we celebrate Puget Sound Starts Here Month, Pollution Prevention Week, and Septic Smart Week. And then we'll wrap up the year in November by celebrating our second Annual Stormwater Awareness Week. We do have a couple of Earth Month events coming up next week. The first is the Free Container Gardening Workshop with Snohomish Conservation District on April 23rd. And the second is a Habitat Restoration Volunteer Event with Whale Scout on April 26th. If you can't make it to either of those events, there are other ways to get involved. For instance, today actually marks the first day of the first-ever National Earth Day Adopt a Drain Contest. This contest runs through April 30th, but you can adopt a storm drain at any time throughout the year, and you can give it kind of a fun nickname. Another way to learn about stormwater and get involved is by sharing your thoughts about the city's stormwater management program plan. This document is updated annually and is always available on our website, and we welcome feedback year round. You can learn more about everything that I've mentioned on this slide and on the previous slide at bothellwad.gov/swm, standing for Surface Water Management. We have made it to the last slide, and I'd like to part with the message I usually do, which is only rain down the drain, down the storm drain. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Zornz?
I don't think I'm the only fan, but I'm such a big fan of stormwater. I don't know what there is about stormwater, but it's just exciting. I want to ask you when you first found out that you love stormwater, too. But a couple comments and questions. One is, I love Pollinator Week. I would love, I've mentioned this for a few years now, I would love to find a way for Bothell to encourage its residents to be part of, their own part of creating a pollinator bridge. So, you know, even if you're in apartments, have something that somebody would want to pollinate. That's not an assignment. I would just love, I would just love it at some point if Bothell just decided, we want to be, you know, really focused on being a pollinated bridge, pollinating bridge. Salmon C., I already voted, wrote it on that. Fun job. I'm really grateful for parks and how they do take care of pet waste. I just take for granted, I remember when I was a kid, seems like anytime you went outside, you were going to step in dog poop. You know what I'm talking about, right? And now it's, it's a rare thing to see somebody's turd left untended. And it's, I'm very grateful that that we're, as a society, we're much better at that. Has there been any more discussion on how to move the needle in in the warmer months? Stormwater gets heated on the pavement. Has there been any movement on how, aside from planting little trees that will someday become big trees, on how we can reduce the temperature? I think I probably mentioned last time we talked about this. I remember Andy Raum, this was his jam, and he said, yeah, it's really expensive, but you can create big vaults that cool the stormwater down before it goes out. I can't see that happening. But has there been any discussion on ways to cool stormwater before it goes into the slough?
I don't want to misspeak, but I, one of my colleagues actually would be the perfect one to answer that. So if I can get back to you with an answer on that.
That would be great. I would really love that. And then, this is, this is going to be a stupid question. Residential car wash. You're washing it on your gravel or your grass. About how long does it take? Because we have a perfect place for, and a banquet, so a long way for those for that to get diluted down. But how long does it take for car detergent to, like, not be in the soil?
That, I think I'm going to have to get back to you on that one, too. I don't know the numbers on that one.
Not that I wash my car every week. I do not do that.
If Councilmember Curd has information, though.
I'd say it depends on the soil type. There's a lot of complicated factors.
It does. I know. And I have a lot of duff, but I know underneath that duff is a lot of clay. So, anyway. And anybody who doesn't know about Snohomish County and King County Conservation District, in November, is that when you can put your orders in for native plants?
Oh, they each have a different time.
They're phenomenal. They're phenomenal. And you'll end up buying more plants than you need. You might be asking the Parks Department, could you use a couple of these plants? Which they can, but do take advantage of the Conservation District. And then, septic, septic maintenance. Is there a recommended time, you know, frequency that you pump your septics?
I'm trying to, I've heard different things from different people. I, I think three to five years is sort of the maximum to let it go, but if you need to do it sooner than that, I mean, it's, it's really going to depend also on how frequently you're using your system, what you're putting into it.
And how many are using it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. And then Nature Vision, public schools, but do private schools tap into that at all? They can. Okay. And then my last question. I have four drains that I'm really attached to that I adopted. How long do I get to keep?
As long as you want.
As long as I'm taking care of them?
And if you would rather not, then you can also, the same way you would love to them, there's an option to unadopt online as well.
Okay. I get a little caretake-ish, possessive over those drains, so. So I just wanted to know. I, I mean, if there was a point where someone said you've got to let those drains go for somebody else, I could do that. But anyway, I wanted to know if there was a timeline. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on a few walks with Councilmember Zornz, and all over the city, she's clearing drains whenever she sees them blocked, so it's almost, almost comical, yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Did I hear you correctly in that the city gives out leash attachments for bags?
Yes.
Where might residents pick those up?
Oh, I have, on our pet waste webpage, just bothellwad.gov/scoop, there's a pet waste pledge section, and it also has a picture of that leash attachment. So if someone wants to fill that pledge out online, I can mail them an attachment. We also hand those out at outreach events when we're, when we're tabling at something. So, actually, at the Earth Day event, I'll have, I'll have some at the former Wayne Golf Course.
Awesome. Thank you. I figured you probably handed them out at all the in-person events, but it's good to know that anybody can get one mailed as well.
Yes.
Pertaining to the tire inflation, I know it can be difficult to check tires. Sometimes it costs to fill with air. Just going to throw it out for the community, Free Tire Inflation, at least in the north part of the city, at Discount Tire and Les Schwab. They're always happy to have you pull in, check your, check your tires and inflate. So if you're looking for a quick and easy way to do it, they're available. I'm sure there are others around town as well.
Excellent. I believe that on the Don't Wait to Inflate website, the map that they have with air filling stations, I think they have all of the Les Schwabs on there.
Councilmember Curd?
Thanks. Thank you, Kristy, for showing up and giving the presentation on all the education programs. As someone who works in a neighboring jurisdiction, hats off to the surface water team here at the city. Fantastic operation you run and really impactful education. So thank you for doing that for our community. In October, there was an online workshop for Living with Beavers, who are our natural engineers and can sometimes engineer nature around our complicated drainage infrastructure and cause problems. I'm wondering, if someone has conflict with beavers, maybe they live on North Creek or a stream in the city, who are you directing them to go to and get more education about that and resources?
We've been, so for that workshop, we worked with Snohomish Conservation District, who had a member that also worked with Beavers Northwest on their team. So she was the one who offered the workshop. I know we've worked with Beavers Northwest on a few areas of North Creek ourselves. So they're actually, our website does have a page specifically about beavers and what to do, how to handle conflict. So for now, I would say they can, you can send them my way, and I'll put them in touch with, with the person that can help them resolve that.
Great. Awesome. I'm really looking forward to seeing the results of the Stormwater Survey, too, and, and learning more about what the current status of the education programs have been and the culture change like some of the other council members have alluded to that we've had regionally. So really exciting work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I do remember the last time you were here, we talked about rain gardens. And I am looking at the website, and it looks like there's a lot more information on there than there maybe previously had been. And just thank you. Thank you for the information about the native plants. And that, you know, it doesn't take necessarily a professional landscaper, a consultant, and city staff to like, help you figure it out. Like, you've really made the information available. That this seems very accessible now, and it's really great to see. So thank you for, for all the work that you do, but I especially noticed that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming out and giving a presentation on surface water after the beginning of our meeting. I really appreciate it. Really appreciate the work that you do. And just thanks. This has been super informative, and I am, I'm looking at the rain gardens site on the website now, too, and I have some research to do.
If you do want someone to come out and do a technical visit to see if your property would be a good fit for a rain garden, I can get someone from our Conservation Districts to come out and do an assessment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor. So the second report that we have on the agenda tonight is from the community. And again, as I mentioned, this is, we have an outside presentation on the state of the schools, highlighting the North Shore School District. And with that, we are joined tonight by Superintendent Michael Tolly, and I also see we have two members of the School Board in attendance as well. That'll turn it over to, to the superintendent.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present this information. I, you may recall in years past, we've attempted to provide a state of our schools to, overview annually sometime in February, typically with a morning meeting. But what we found is that we were not reaching the broader community. So what we've decided this year is to go out and about, and basically, I've been on tour. I had an opportunity to be at UW-Bothell this morning, talking with staff and many of the administration there. And so having an opportunity to present here at Bothell City Council Meeting is greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. And as you can see, I have two of my board members here, my bosses. We have the President, Amy Cast, and Director Han Tran with us this evening. And they're here primarily, I guess, for moral support, if you would. Yes. So again, my, my name is Michael Tolly. I'm Superintendent in North Shore School District. And what I would like to do with our State of Our Schools presentation, begin by saying, here's our mission statement. North Shore's mission is, of course, to strengthen our very diverse community through excellence in education. And I've always talked about the fact that I'm fully aligned with this. I've had a pleasure and a privilege to work in multiple areas, particularly in the southeast, where I'm originally from, Charleston, South Carolina, for 22 years, an education year. And I would see the impact of providing an excellent education to an individual student. Doesn't just change the student, it changes the family. And when you do that, then you improve the outcomes for the entire community. That also happened in Seattle Public Schools, when I worked there for 12 years, and now here, for six years in North Shore, same thing. So this particular mission statement is, of course, the work that our educators do each and every day to make sure that all of our students receive an excellent education, ultimately to improve the outcomes for those individual students, their families, and the entire community. So here's, here's North Shore by the numbers. And I would like to say that it is an impressive body of work, serving about 23,000 students in our 34 schools. That 34 schools, of course, include four large comprehensive high school, to include Bothell High School, of course, but also Woodenville, Inglemore, and North Creek High School. Six, well, we have a couple of alternative high schools, our Secondary Academy for Success, of course, and Innovation Lab High School. We have six middle schools, and of course, 20 elementary schools and some, some other alternatives. So as you can see, we also So, as you can see, we also have about 15,000, 1,500 certificated staff, but probably just as many classified staff, so about 3,000 employees. We are, of course, a very high-performing district. We outperform the region and state in multiple measures, including graduation rates at about 95%. And as you can see, our general fund is around $444 million annually. That capital bond is numbered at $218 million. That was the result of our very generous community in support of our, our students and our whole North Shores. We actually passed a bond, a capital bond measure back in 2022, over $400 million bond. And so, we've sold those bonds, and we have quite a bit of construction occurring within the district. We will talk a little bit more about that later, but that's why you see $218 million capital projects currently, but more work to be done there. I would like you to take a minute and look at this demographic information that has, referring to what's happened to, within the North Shore community, or at least in, over the last 10 years or so, significant shift within our population that we served. And I am pleased to talk about what we heard earlier in the meeting, is the diversity of North Shore is one of our strengths, absolutely. And, but it also requires that we take time to better understand the needs of our, our students and their families. When, here we, of course, now, North Shore is considered a majority-minority school district, as a result of this major shift that we've seen happening. Here's a graphic illustration of what's been going on within North Shore over a period of years. The top part of, each bar represents a year. The top part of the bar is our white student demographic. The lower part represents our, our other populations, major populations, and you can see that light blue is representative of our Asian population. So the shift has been taking place over time, but again, it is absolutely one of the strengths of North Shore School District overall. Another demographic shift that you can see here in this next slide, over the last 10 years or so, is the services that we're providing our students in terms of our low-income population and multilingual students. But more importantly, if you notice, the number of languages that we have spoken within the homes in the North Shores has gone up to 119 different languages. And as you can see that, and I think this, this particular set of data is a little off now, Portuguese has actually become more and more common within North Shore family homes as our Brazilian population expands within this community. So, what I would like to do here is talk a little bit about the North Shore Strategic Plan that was developed, and I have to emphasize, this is not my plan, and of course, it's not the school board's plan, this is the community's plan. When the school board worked with our broad community to ask them, what do you want us to ensure that we're providing the students in North Shore? This resulted. So when we talk about the North Shore Strategic Plan, we make, we emphasize that it is what our community is holding us accountable for. This is what we have promised that we will deliver on to the community. And I, and I have to say, I'm personally held accountable, this is part of my own evaluation as superintendent, and we actually report on each of these goals on an annual basis to the school board and the broader community to show how we're progressing. Behind each of these goals, there are about five or six different measures, and behind that, you'll also find lots of metrics. And so, we are constantly reviewing our data sets and making sure that we're progressing and determining what next, what else do we need to do to basically deliver on the promise of this plan. What I will do at this time is just kind of walk through each of these goals a little bit and give you one or two examples of what that looks like as we are working on this. So, and I guess, while the slide is here, I will point out that Goal One and Goal Five, it's like the bookends of the work, you know, what, making sure we have success in the early years, that we provide our students great foundational skills early on, that result in our students being ready for lifelong success once they leave us at graduation. In the middle, you will see, yeah, the Goal Two is our social-emotional goal, making sure our students are responsible, resilient, empathetic learners. Growth of every, of every one of our students by eliminating opportunities and outcome gaps, that's our academic goal measure. And we also need to make sure we are preparing our students for what's coming next. As you think about the world that our students will be stepping into, it's critically important that they're innovative, creative, and critical thinkers. So, in Goal One, just a prime example, we as, as a system are very, as I mentioned earlier, a very high-performing school district, but that's based on the fact that we spend, we invest in our students early and often, if you would. And that is exemplified by our most recent adoption and implementation of a new set of materials, basically to teach our students how to read. We, three years ago, our community supported the funding of, and our board voted approval of a new set of materials called Into Reading, and we began implementing that. One of the things people may or may not know is that when you start implementing a new set of instructional materials, their research will say, yeah, you may experience what is called an implementation dip in student performance. As a, as student, as teachers, unpack the materials and start using a new set of materials and, and possibly new strategies. In North Shore, that did not happen. So, from the beginning, we have seen improved outcomes in our student data, particularly our students that we know we have still work to do. We have a group of students that we have not served well yet within our data, our largest group, that's our Hispanic-Latino population. But even there, we've seen significant improvements over time, particularly in K through, through third grade and in fifth grade. So we're very excited about the fact that, yes, we're making sure our students receive some foundational skills so that as they progress through our system, they're ready to take advantage of everything we have to offer. Goal Two, the responsible, resilient, empathetic learners. This is, again, as we said, our, our social-emotional goal. We're really paying attention to the mental health and well-being of our students within this goal. Through that, North Shore provides counseling services. In every one of our schools, we have at least one full-time counselor, including all of our elementary schools. But we also have mental health specialists in our secondary schools and many of our elementary schools as well. So that body of work is, is there. But the other example I want to give here is our students, how they are involved in the work of Goal Two. So in the upper left-hand corner of this, this slide, you'll see a group of students who are involved in Community Serve Day. In North Shore, just before the school year begins, we have over 2,000 volunteers come and work in our schools, and they're, you know, pulling weeds and just preparing it for the return of our students from the summer. Our students are a big part of that work, and so proud of that effort. In the upper right, you'll see a picture of four students who are, they refer to as the Good Acts Group. There is a club that they formed at North Creek High School, where they actually provide opportunities for our youngest learners to sell their wares, you know, entrepreneurial experiences. But ultimately, what they're doing is fundraising, raising funds there, they also provide tutoring and tennis lessons, and so, and raise these dollars, and then turn around and donate it back to the district to fund things like, this past summer, we had a summer meals program, where we served over 300 families, about 1,000 individuals, but it was our students who is contributing to that, as well as then buying the food, packing the boxes, and delivering it. So proud. And just to move along, in the lower right, you'll see our CP and Dorothy Johnson Humanitarian Award. We identify two students in every one of our schools each year, and recognize them for their humanitarian spirit, and, of course, the award named after CP and Dorothy Johnson, and so proud of the work that our, our students do there. This going on. Goal Three is our, as I mentioned, our academic goal. And here, what I would like to do is tell you about our North Shore commitments, particularly to our students that, as I mentioned, we haven't served well yet, that's our Latino-Hispanic population, so we're really focused on identifying strategies to work on that. And as I also mentioned earlier, within the strategic plan, we have five goals, but there are about 26 measures behind that, and lots of metrics. So trying, we are reporting on all of that data on an annual basis. However, for the community and everyone to kind of track what we're doing and the health of the district, we have identified six metrics that we report on, what we call key performance indicators. And if you go to the district website right now, you would be able to find those, and we will update those on a regular basis and basically hold ourselves accountable for that work. There are two metrics at the elementary levels, two at middle and two at high. And so, just to quickly go through those, at the elementary level, we're tracking and reporting on how many of our students are reading on grade level by the end of third grade, but we're also doing that for mathematics at the end of, with, on grade level by the end of third grade. Of course, you know, many of you know, we are teaching students to read through third grade, but then in fourth grade, they're reading to learn, so it's critically important that they're on grade level by the end of third grade. And then, of course, in mathematics, that, you know, those fundamental skills of addition, multiplication, division, and so on, are fundamental skills that we're making sure our students are mastering. At the middle school level, making sure our students are reading on grade level by the end of the eighth grade, in order for them to be well-prepared to take advantage of what, what's available to them at high school. But eighth grade, that's not to say the students aren't reading, can read in eighth grade, but their reading on grade level is really tied to their comprehension skills, you know, non-fiction texts and literary materials. Also at middle school, successful completion of algebra by the end of the eighth grade. In Goal Three, our community has made it very clear that one of the things they expect is that we allow our students to have greater access to advanced course offerings, particularly those students who are typically underrepresented there. So we have worked hard in this, in the district to continually increase the percentage of students successfully completing algebra in eighth grade. At this point, North Shore students, again, a high-performing district, about 71% of our students are completing algebra in eighth grade. But we also know that only about 30 to 35% of our Hispanic-Latino population is actually doing that. And so, it's a, coming behind us to address that issue where we have work to do, absolutely. And so, we have a math initiative occurring at the elementary school currently to get at that. We provide additional resources at middle school to get at that concern, but that's a body of work that we're doing. And I, I can't help but mention this, so nationally, the number of students completing algebra in eighth grade is around 30%. But here in North Shore, because our community has an expectation that our students have access to that advanced coursework, we're at 71%. And so, it's a data point that some people may have a little bit of, there's a little bit of controversy around that, but again, our job is to be responsive to our community, and that's what our community is expecting. At the high school level, just two measures there, completing four years of math in high school, we're tracking that, of course, that's as it ties to college admission requirements, as well as these cater requirements, caters, our, our college academic distribution requirements, that's, those are six course areas that we want to make sure our students are achieving in, so that they are prepared to, for admission in college. That's math, science, social studies, language arts, art, and world languages. So, we are tracking those data points, we are reporting on them on a regular basis within Goal Three. Quickly, Goal Four, innovative, creative, critical thinkers. You know, our students are going into a world when they graduate where we have everything from artificial intelligence to climate change, and they need to be able to think critically and creatively to solve many of those problems. So we provide opportunities for our students to get at that through programs like robotics at Woodinville and Bethel High School. Those students are working in teams to solve unique problems to, that is presented to them, to put, to put together the robots to, to address those things. We also see it within our career and technical education programs, we see that in our DECA programs and so on. The other thing here, though, is technological proficiency in the use of computers. Because of the generosity of our voters, we, who have passed our tech levies, we are able to provide each and every one of our students some type of device actually to take home, whether it's a computer or Chromebook or a iPad. Our students have access to that, and that basically levels the playing field when it comes to that particular piece. That's within this goal. And finally, our graduation goal, if you would, making sure our students are ready for what comes next. So when our students walk across the stage at graduation, we want to make sure, that's not to say they all will be going to college, but they need to at least be able to have the choice. If they choose to, want to go to college, we're preparing them for that. And so, we, in this particular goal, as I mentioned, we are a high-performing district with 95% of our students are graduating within four years. But we also know that we have to provide a variety of advanced course-taking opportunities. So, we do offer advanced placement courses, international baccalaureate, as you know, at Inglemore High School, college and the high school, in partnership with our local colleges. We also have a lot of more, we continue to expand our career and technical education programming. This year, we've added aerospace manufacturing, we've added project lead-away, pre-engineering programs, and environmental science programs, and so on. So, it's exciting in this area. I guess the only other thing is to mention here is that we're really working, our career and, our career counselors at our high schools, they work hard to make sure our students know what to do and, and to navigate college-going efforts. They provide a virtual college fair every year now, and hundreds of our families actually participate in that, so they, they know how to navigate that particular next opportunity that they have. So that's our strategic plan. I would like to provide just a couple of spotlights from the district. This image is of students and staff at Ruby Bridges Elementary School. And what, what we want to point out here is, in this image, to, the person standing to my, you know, to my left, but in this picture on the right, is Kim Brumer. Kim Brumer is the 2025 Washington State Teacher of the Year here in our, in our school. But also in this picture there, you'll see that the principal there is Kathy Davis. Kathy Davis is the Washington State 2025 Elementary Principal of the Year at Ruby Bridges, both at the same school. I don't think that's ever happened before, so we're very proud of that. But I also have to point out, we have other staff that are being recognized at the state level. Our secondary librarian, 2025 Librarian of the Year is at North Shore Middle School, and that's Heidi, Heidi Bush, right. And then, there, Washington State's Education Support Professional, a classified position, we have Rick Calhoun, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Rick Calhoun, who's, who's a campus supervisor at Inglemore High School. So, very proud of North Shore and our staff and the work they do, and they're reckon, being recognized for the work that they're doing within the state of Washington. Another spotlight here is a body of work that we have going on as a result of the, again, the generosity of our voters in terms of supporting our most recent bond effort. Actually, both the 2018 and the 2022 bond. This was a ribbon-cutting of the inclusive playground at Frank Love Elementary School at the beginning of this year. But that was made possible as a result of the investments that our community is making within our schools. And talking about bonds and, as well as levies, we, of course, are dependent on our community to make up for the fact that the state does not fully fund public education, those shortfalls. We have to then use our local levies to make up the difference. On, pretty much on an annual basis, about $20 million annually from our local levy goes into making sure our students with disabilities and learning differences are basically getting the things they need to be successful, what, which we would call a general education function, but we need to actually subsidize that. Our multilingual learners, we're about, putting probably about $4 million additionally into that body of work that we're not receiving from the state, and it's coming from the levy. I mean, just to pay the electric bill or fuel bill, insurance, we're needing to put another $4 to $5 million of our local levy into, into another $4 to $5 million of our local levy into, into that in order to make it work. It is critically important that our state, as you know, we have a funding crisis across the entire state of Washington. We're hopeful that there will be some changes this legislative session, but we are absolutely depending on our, our local community provide those fundings within the levies. Same thing with bonds. Our capital bond, we're 100% reliant on our local community to invest in our facilities through our capital bonds and passing those bonds. As a result, as I mentioned, of the 2022 bond effort, we were able to break ground on eight major projects within the district this summer at a number of our elementary schools, as, as you're well aware, from Maywood Hills to, to where, anyway, Crystal Springs, we will find, of course, within the city of Bothell, but then other places like, we have some work going on at West, West Hill and Sorensen. We are in the process of beginning the replacement of Leota Middle School. In the summer, we'll be breaking ground on the first phase one replacement, replacement of Inglemore High School. But all of that is a result of our community investing in our, our schools. And our community engagement is tremendous. As, as I mentioned, this is a photo from our Community Serve Day back earlier in August. There is actually one of our, another one of our school board members in that photo, but 2,000 volunteers come out every year to, to work on that. In North Shore, we have around 11,000 active volunteers within our schools, everything from coaching to art docents to helping students to read on, within the schools, to going on field trips and so on. That's basically one volunteer for every two students within North Shore School District. That support from our broader community is outstanding, and that's unique to North Shore. That is something you just don't see everywhere. So I'm, I'm very proud of being able to serve this community because of their overall engagement. Speaking of engagement, here's another group of volunteers. This is last year's Superintendent Student Advisory Board. They helped me make some critical decisions. As you know, we've had to make some very hard budgetary decisions over the last couple of years. Over the last two years, we've cut $46 million out of our budget, but this group of students helped inform those decisions. For example, we were looking at reducing back from seven-period day at the high school back to a six-period day. This group of students made it very clear the value of having that seventh period, so we listened to them, and we still have a seventh period. This next group, this year's Superintendent Student Advisory Board, they're very engaged and making sure they're informing everything from a smart device policy that we have, or mobile device policy within the district, and now we're developing a, basically, the procedure that goes with that. How do we want to manage cellphone use within our schools? This group is informing that. We are looking at our middle school programmings and how do we might want to change, some are making adjustments to make sure we're absolutely serving our students well. These individuals being recently within our middle schools help inform that conversation, and they've helped us go to Olympia and basically have a conversation with our local legislators, all nine of our particular group of legislators. There on the left-hand side of that slide, you'll see our students along with members of our teacher union, PTA, our board members and, and staff visiting, this is back in January, to help our local legislators know how critically important it is to fully fund public ed, and I think it's actually helped, and we're very hopeful that things will be changing in the right direction this year. I also mentioned that once, the, one of the major strengths of the districts is the diversity of our, our community, but then that requires that we take time to learn from our community about how best to serve their students and what their hopes and dreams are, and their culture and all those things. So over the last two years, I've been holding what are called, you know, listen and learn tours, and I've invited our families into our, in this case, our school, our boardroom and, and to basically educate us around what we need to know to better serve their students. One of the things I did at the beginning of my tenure as superintendent is form what is referred to as our Family Engagement Resource Center. That, that's not additional individuals, we just reorganized ourselves so that we can be better engaging of our broader community, and that, that particular effort has resulted in a tremendously improved relationship with our families and ultimately with improved outcomes for our students. And this is the last slide, I just want to point out this, one example of a story where this individual, this student, John, had left us but then came back to school and wanted to graduate, and wanted to figure out how. He had a lot of work to do, but the principal there, Brian Mathias, along with a counselor and one of our exec directors of schools, put this plan together, pretty ambitious plan for him to work through courses, many of them online. But John worked a full-time job and was able to complete all of his requirements for graduation this past summer. So in the fall, we held a graduation celebration for him and just John in our boardroom, because that's what it is all about. It's each and every one of our students making sure they get to that point, and John now is, you know, considering post-secondary, and, and we're supporting him in, in thinking through that as well. So that's the work of North Shore. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information, and of course, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the update. I don't, okay, I have one question. With your Student Advisory Board.
Yes.
What is something that the students have brought to you that is worth tackling but that you haven't been able to tackle that kind of sits with you still?
Oh, that's a great question. I have to reflect on that for a minute. They have expressed, and this is something we've actually begun to work on, but they want to make sure there's more opportunity for students from across our high schools to interact with each other, particularly in the area of race and educational justice. So we do have a student-led coalition around that topic, but they would like to expand that more than it has been. And so that's an ongoing body of work, but it's, you know, there, there are, of course, logistical challenges for those, building those relationships and, you know, just a little bit of school pride and competition that gets in the way a little bit too, but that's something that they've come to me. We, of course, have our ethnic studies work to get at some of that, what they're wanting to do, but expanding that within our schools is something they've expressed they would like to see more of as well. It really comes down to the students having time within their schedules to be able to schedule those courses, and it comes down to interest when it comes at the high school level as an ethnic studies course, those students, if enough students request that, then we can offer it. But what I've heard directly from them, there is not enough of that, and so that's, that's a body of work that we continue to try to figure out, okay, how do we continue to ensure that we offer ethnic studies? And another core, a new course, Ethnic Studies in Action, that's at North Creek, but that's not at all of our high schools, so we, we have work to do there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've had the chance, I volunteered in my son's classroom, he's in third grade now. Some of the councilmembers and I went to Skyview to talk to a leadership class two years ago. I've been able to volunteer in civics class at Inglemore High School, and I've gotten to go to a candidate forum and an issues forum held by the same civics class at Inglemore High School, and they're so well-done, and it's this level of community engagement that I don't, as someone who went through North Shore myself, K through 12, I, I don't remember from my school days. And it's very cool that you have teachers that are kind of bringing the community in, and the things that, that I get to hear from the students on, the, being in, it's Ms. Baker's classroom, I'm just gonna shout her out because she was amazing, and the, each student had an issue and they reached out to an elected official about it, and just being able to hear what's on our students' minds, like, it gave me so much hope for the future, so it's, thank you for telling me what they brought to you, because I'm just curious, like, it's been such a cool experience to get to volunteer at different levels of school than my kid is at, and everybody's doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you for volunteering at the schools as well. I do the same thing, and I also came through the North Shore School District and did not see this caliber of involvement from the community back when I was going to school. So something has shifted in the community for the better, I think.
Definitely, and I know we're both North Shore parents now too, so it's pretty exciting that our kids get to go through that.
Debbie, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Superintendent Tully for this presentation. Might be the last one, because, sorry to hear about the news.
Yes, there is this rumor out there that a decision was made.
Oh, why are you looking at the president?
Yeah, we call it the decision.
We're just going straight passive voice now.
Yes, so, yes, I, it is my intent to retire at the end of this current school year, and they're actively in the process of a superintendent search. Applications are due on the 20th, so anybody interested in this particular role? Yes.
Well, it's sad, because I had the pleasure of working with you directly, and we met a few times, and you've been a, a great leader and a great listener, more importantly, and you're going to be missed. Big shoes to fill for the next person, so thank you for your service.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Councilmember Aldrich.
You were right. Thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you for being responsive to the needs of the community and recognizing that, that your traveling tour is, is maybe, I hope, gonna get more views, and, and it's really beneficial for us to hear this, especially as we've had members of the community come to us, and encourage the council to, to speak up on behalf of school funding, both in our legislative agenda and, and to the district. So we have tried to be responsive to those requests.
Yes, and you have, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Great, thank you. I do, I also have a scheduled meeting with you coming up here soon, so we'll be sitting down and talking about, you know, the, the challenges that, that my family has particularly faced, and so I don't necessarily know if I need to go into some of the questions, but it's been a really great presentation, and, and what, there is one piece that I do want to touch on, which is you meant to, you mentioned mental health specialists in the schools, and one of the things that the city did with ARPA funding was contracting with the Center for Human Services. Some of those professionals, if I understand, are working with our local schools, and I'm wondering if you could just give us an update on, on how that's going, how that, that partnership is working, if you have details.
I, I don't have details on that currently, but I will mention, one of the challenges that we have is that it's not mental, we actually hire mental health therapists, and of course, their certifications are associated with that. And there is always a challenge in making sure we are able to identify and hire those individuals, so that's ongoing, so these, a partnership like you just described is absolutely critical to fill the gaps when we're not able to identify the people with the proper certification. So I, I appreciate that particular body of work, but the details I do not have with me right now.
Okay, and so we, we might hear those details from Center for Human Services when they come back with, to us. And then another question that I had is, and rightfully so, your 95% graduation rate is something to be incredibly proud of, but I also just want to put in a shout-out for the kids, especially special education kids, who have the opportunity to delay graduation until they turn almost 22. So it's 21 in 364 days, but there is an additional number of students in our district who do graduate and are not within the four-year time period, and it's, because it's developmentally appropriate for them to have, to have that delay. And so could you tell me of that 95%, like, in addition to the 95%, what percentage of students are graduating outside of the four years?
So, so going to ballpark, in terms of the, the fifth or sixth-year graduation rate, of course, that number goes up. Overall, we are, we get up into about 97% of our students are graduating within that, the fifth year, seventh year, sixth year, I'm sorry, yes.
And that is amazing. And it's, it's critically important to have those opportunities, especially for some kids who experience developmental delays, that the pressure to graduate with their class is incredibly high, and there is no shame and a great deal of pride that can be taken of those students who continue to go on to graduate.
Absolutely, the fact that they stick with us and work through everything they need to do to meet that, that particular goal, as well as, of course, graduating is just one step forward. We want to make sure our students are also taking advantage of post-secondary opportunities, not just college or, but other career opportunities, and making sure our students are doing that. I think, as, as you mentioned, I'm really proud of our adult transition to independence programming and adult transition programming that we also offer within our school system to ensure that our students have higher, basically, employable skills as they leave us as needed as well.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see that, that 2% celebrated.
Yes.
And included, so a 97% graduation rate sounds even better than 95.
That's true. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight. I, I love hearing what's going on in North Shore schools. I, like Councilmember Dodd, am a graduate of North Shore schools all the way from elementary through high school, and your, your discussion on the recognition of staff at the state level really had me reflect back on teachers that were impactful in my life, and I, I don't think you really think about it until something like that, you know, you're, you're talking about the impact they had, you think back, you think, oh, this teacher and this teacher and this teacher, like, they all cared about the students. And as much as we talk about investing the dollars through levies and things like that, the investments from those teachers in those students' lives is like exponentially higher than any dollar amount we can invest, and I think that's one of the keys to success in North Shore, is those caring teachers, those caring administrators who are there with the kids, they're, they're making sure they're learning what they need to learn, they're empathetic, they're seeing, you know, kids with all sorts of things going on in their families, and they're, they're helping steer them in the right direction and being a support where they may not get it at home or other places in the community. So I just wanted to say, please convey that to the teachers and staff members as you talk to them. It, it's incredible what our North Shore School District teachers and staff do, and want to thank them for that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do have the opportunity to interact with our teachers on a regular basis. I go and visit all of our schools. Today, I was at Crystal Springs in a meeting with staff first thing in the morning and then students and all, and I do share that, and I will continue to make sure they understand how much we appreciate the work that they do each and every day with our students. Thank you.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, board members, for attending too, and providing the moral support. It's really great to see all of you, and thanks for the partnership that the city has with the district. I think that's a really special relationship that not every city has with its school district, so really appreciate the discussions that we can have and the candor. I know that Crystal Springs has been under construction for a while now, and also seeing Maywood Hills, construction efforts going on, and I know that we, we, you just completed efforts at Bothell High School too, so there's been a lot of capital investment in our schools. I'm wondering if there have been any challenges or if things have been kind of moving along at a steady pace, or have you, are you like on schedule, any delays, unexpected things?
Well, for Maywood Hills and Crystal Springs, we are on schedule, and we are excited, and, you know, it's one of those things, you don't want to jinx anything kind of thing, but we've been told that, yes, come September, those buildings will be, we will have occupancy and we will be in those buildings. Again, this morning at Crystal Springs, I was talking about the, there, of course, we're going to be installing an inclusive playground there and a turf field in the back part of that property as well. All of that should be in place before the school year starts next year, so that's on track. The modular buildings at Bothell High School, we had a little bit of delays in getting that work done due to some of our permitting and challenges and things like that, but those, those buildings are open and functional. those buildings are open and functional, and our students are really taking advantage of those, that new space that we provided there.
That's fantastic. Thanks for the update.
On our website, you might appreciate this being, I think it's a generational thing, the two millennials on the school board really appreciate the visuals on the construction projects. There's a page for each one, and there's diagrams, and there's photos of the construction site, and also an aerial view. Check it out.
I love that. Thank you, yes. Aerial photos are amazing, so I'll definitely check it out.
I just wanted to say thank you, not just for coming here tonight, thank you for that, both the directors and Superintendent Tully. But my son moved from Bear Creek to Marlins earlier this year, in the middle of the year, and we were concerned with like how that would go, kind of uprooting him in the middle of the year, and he has had a wonderful time. Amy Stewart is my 2025 Teacher of the Year. He has been welcomed, and he is enjoying it and thriving and doing incredibly well. And I say thank you because this has impacted my family, but I know that I am not the only family that is impacted by that, and that's been my experience, but I'm just representative of the work that you do or the impact of the work that you do. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
You're very welcome, and on behalf of North Shore and all of our educators, that's the work we do every day, so thank you.
And also, I love the new field in North Shore Middle School, too, like, because we live right there, and I get to go play on it. So thank you so much for all of the work you do and for coming here tonight. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Councilmember Curd.
Hey, thanks. Yes, last week I attended the Sound Cities Association's Public Issues Committee meeting, and it was a pretty straightforward meeting. We discussed the parks levy update from King County, for which SCA worked to amend the levy to lower the rate and increase direct pass-through to cities. So that was kind of, there is a little bit of discussion around that, and interest in more equitable distribution of levy funding across the county. There's also a legislative update, which we're in the session, yep. And then one of the more interesting, for me, components of the meeting was discussing wastewater rates. Okay, it sounds funny. Yeah, I am who I am. I got some notes from city staff beforehand, just kind of tracking what the conversation has been, and knowing that for generations we've disinvested, or there's been apathy in investment in our critical infrastructure, and that's coming back to haunt us now. And Water Treatment District, wastewater treatment district or division, is projecting kind of a massive increase in rates that the city and Alderwood and North Shore's Utility District and Woodenville Water, all of which supply our residents here in the city. That increase is going to be coming down the pipeline and impacting everyone. And so there is kind of existential dread when the conversation started, and it was not resolved in a two-hour meeting. And so there are some folks at Kirkland, Penny Sweet, Councilmember Sweet, who's looking to start up a more regional conversation and sort of a forum for elected officials to come and learn and also share priorities over how these rate increases are going to impact the people who live here and the people who, you know, may struggle to, struggle with the, you know, large increases in rates over the next five years and onward from there. So I guess I don't have any notes from Councilmember Sweet in Kirkland, but expect when I do, that will either come from me, or I'll direct it to our city's executive team to send out if you'd like to participate in those conversations and the sort of roundtable discussion with other councils who are, and wastewater treatment divisions that are going to be impacted. So be on the lookout for that.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I've got a committee update from Eastside Transportation Partnership. The group met last week on April 11th, and there is some exciting news around new Redmond stations opening soon on May 10th. So the Marymore and Downtown Redmond stations will be opening, there'll be a ribbon cutting at 10:30, and the first trains will depart Downtown Redmond Station at noon. For those keeping track, this is the beginning of Sound Transit Phase Two. These are the first stations of Phase Two to open. Next up is the Mercer Island stations as a part of the voter-approved Sound Transit Phase Two. Next, we also got an update from King County Metro about fare enforcement. So back on March 31st, efforts began to inform writers that fare enforcement would be beginning, and they were going around asking for proof of fare payment, but starting May 31st, writers will receive written warnings. And that, the rules along those lines are if there are two written warnings, a fine will be issued. And they also made a point to discuss how kind of comprehensive the fine options are based on the, based on who is, like, who's receiving the fine. So it could be like funds on an ORCA card, a reduced fare card, or community service. Like, that could be the consequence that comes, is that there's actually support, but then fare enforcement officers, okay, I already said that part. But yeah, so it may be that some people who have difficulty paying will actually end up getting assistance through ORCA cards or reduced fare. But there is also an option of doing community service rather than paying the fine. And so that is, that's what we heard at that meeting last week. Thank you.
Councilmember Zorn.
Yeah, I'm maybe a little scattered here, so I apologize upfront. CTC met a couple weeks ago, we did a campus tour on their sustainability, discussed the new building plans that are going on and the funding angst that they have over there at Cascadia. We also discussed student housing to be really full up and running the next academic year, also talked about the absence of crows down there in the wetlands and how the E. coli count has dropped dramatically, which is very, very welcome. You can walk the wetlands down, and it doesn't smell like a stinky birdcage, which is really nice. Also, in that conversation, we were talking about the start of the school year for U of D Bothell, and they're looking for activities to do when kids come in that last week of September. And I mentioned that we have, what are we calling it? Moonlight on Main that could possibly at some future date be something that could coordinate. Ryan McIrving got his eyes lit up when I told him that, you know, potentially down the road, we could coordinate and do the timing with Moonlight on Main as students are coming in, and they can come right on down into downtown. And then LTAC met, we talked a lot about Rami's favorite subject, soccer. Deanie McGee is also a big soccer player, so she had the countdown, it's 421 days until World Cup. The end of summer, I guess, is when we're going to know what teams are coming. And rather than us hosting watch parties, LTAC will be promoting businesses that are doing the watch parties. North Shore Youth Soccer is talking about how to get a footsall court in, which is a smaller soccer court, and might possibly fit on activating the play area for a lot EF&amp;G, which I can imagine a bunch of kids would enjoy, and adults would enjoy, college kids would enjoy participating in that. And Street Sense, who is doing our Begin at Bothell, is already starting the update for soccer. And Holiday Lights got rave reviews, that's how long it's been since we last met. And we are going to be talking later about how to share some of the holiday love with Canyon Park and still stay in our lane as LTAC. I think that, oh, and there was, they got on a jag about how about getting more EV chargers in downtown Bothell, so just want to let you know that they're kind of, there's community rumbling about that. On a community level, I just wanted to do a shout out to Dave Hayward of Carolina Smoke. He turned 71, and they had a big retirement party. Carolina Smoke is staying here, but he is going south with their sunshine, so we're going to miss him, and I just want to thank him for everything that he's done for Bothell, our first responders and our veterans. And then just, I just wanted to share one thought. I had heard a parent wonder if they needed to have security, if they were going to need security at their bar mitzvah for their 13-year-old, which led me to ask a Jewish friend here in Bothell, in their community, is antisemitism, is that something that they feel here in Bothell? And they said, very much so, it's definitely a problem and an issue, so that's something we should have been proactive on yesterday. In that vein, this is a holy week for Jews and Christians, both acknowledging that we're made in God's image, which means we reflect creativity and all kinds of good things, hopefully. And so to our Bothell Jewish and Christian friends this holy week, Happy Passover, remembering freedom from oppression, and Happy Easter, where faith and mercy meet for our living hope. And that's what I got.
All right, next up is projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have something they would like to discuss? In that case, at 9:24 PM, I would love a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, baby.
Oh.
But he was looking at you.
Yeah. It's not fair, like.
I move to approve consent.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Manki and a second from Councilmember Aldrich. Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd, who is killing me.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to pull anything from the agenda, but I do want to say thank you to the team at the city who was creative in the AB 25071, the refurbishment of the aerial ladder truck. I think that's $150,000, that's going to save the city a whole ton of money in the long term and expand capacity for the north part of our city with the ladder truck in the future, once we get our new ladder truck here. So just wanted to do a shout out and recognize that that's a huge lift, and I'm going to be voting in support.
Councilmember Zorn.
That same topic caught my eye and I had a discussion with our city manager, could we pull it and talk about it, because it's pretty fantastic. So I guess we're going to be discussing it later, but I have, where is it being transported to? Ohio for its refurbishment? I have a great mental picture of this big truck being gingerly carried for its repair, so thank you for noticing that. It was a good, it's a good thing for Bothell.
Here, here. City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Curd.
Yes.
Councilmember Manki.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, moving on to public hearings. We have a public hearing on the updates to Chapter 1222 and 1264 BMC Sign Code. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Yes, we do have one public hearing tonight, and I think we have someone in attendance for the public hearing, so this is good. You recently received a study session that reviewed both Part One, which is what's being worked on now, and Part Two of changes which are proposed to come back in the fall for Part One, there's some content revisions. With that, I believe we have a presentation, but perhaps not. Okay. We're joined by Megan Rigney, who is a planner for community development, to just frame briefly as a reminder of what is part of that Part One content. And then, again, just as a reminder, there's no action scheduled for tonight. If, yeah, council will be receiving the option of adopting the code later in May. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Megan.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm here tonight to follow up on our discussion about the Phase One Sign Code update and the briefing from April 1st, tonight's, to hold a public hearing. The Sign Code regulates the types, sizes, and placement of signs throughout Bothell to ensure safety, aesthetics, and compliance with federal law. Community Development is updating the Sign Code to ensure compliance with Supreme Court rulings and remove content-based distinctions. This is a Phase One of two phases of a Sign Code update. The final draft updates BMC Chapter 12.22 and 12.64, and final draft findings, conclusions, recommendations are in the agenda bill starting on page 148. For the Bothell municipal code, the city is required to hold a public hearing to approve this code update, and now I recommend that you open up a public hearing to meet that requirement. Thank you for your time.
I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do. Mr. Randy Bannaker is here. If you'd step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Randy Bannaker. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors and wanted to comment on the Sign Code. Our members place tremendous value on the opportunity to represent buyers and sellers in the city of Bothell. Real estate signs, despite all sorts of technology available to buyers, real estate signage remains a really important tool to ensure a swift transaction, and also importantly, to support the goals of fair housing. Since signs simply cannot discriminate, anyone can see what's available for sale, what's open for an open house. I'm here tonight to support the proposed Phase One Sign Code update with a minor request. Our signs have a generally consistent look and dimension. The open house A-board signs that you see typically on a Sunday afternoon for an open house, up for usually 1:00 to 4:00 PM, these signs are placed in the right-of-way, outside of, you know, the sidewalk and whatnot, and they are 24 by 24 inches. Again, they are in the category of an off-premises sign. The off-premises temporary sign. The sign that is in front of the house is a for-sale sign, it's on a yardarm. The yardarm holds the live area of the sign, and it is an on-premises temporary sign. These signs are usually up during the period that the home is for sale, and the size of that's 24 by 30 inches. Now, my reading of the proposed code would restrict that sign to two square feet, rather than what turns out to be approximately five square feet. Again, this is an industry standard, it's exactly what you see with most of the different brokerages, and we're hoping to continue the ability to use that standard sign. So we're requesting, we're respectfully requesting that that minor adjustment be made. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up to speak. However, there is one gentleman in the audience, Mr. Lowish, if you would like to speak, step to the mic, and I do have one person online. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function, and we'll panel you into the meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Counsel? Oh, I'd like to close the public hearing. Sorry, Eileen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Could we get a follow-up email about the sign, from the comment versus the code, and just an analysis of that to make sure that we're not requiring everybody who sells a house here to buy a different-sized sign? That seems like a, kind of a big thing.
Yeah, staff will look at that, and we'll include information in the packet when it comes back for adoption.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. In that case, we, we're going to adjourn to closed session to discuss labor negotiations pursuant to RCW 423144A. It is 9:32 PM. We are going to adjourn at 10:00 PM.